Well, welcome everybody to the Select Board meeting of Monday, May 6th at 5:30 at the Lakeville Police Station. LakeCam is recording. Is there anybody else here recording this evening? No? Alright, well, if we can please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. Thank you. It's good to see everybody again. I hope you all, everybody have a good weekend.
Trying to catch up on things.
Yeah, it was a good day to get outside for some yard work and Lakeville Day and all that good stuff. So, okay, we got a few announcements this evening. There is a beautification project being planned for Assawamset School, which includes the purchasing of mulch and plantings for the entrance side of the building and plants for the barrels that are in front of the building on the front lawn. Donations are being sought for the cost of the materials. And anyone looking to donate can mail it to AssawamsetPTO at 232 Main Street, Lakeville, Mass. 02347. And Flowers and Mulch Project, oh, and just put a note that it's the Flowers and Mulch Project on the check. If you have any questions, you can certainly call the Select Board's office and we can provide that address for you or direction. But they are also seeking volunteers to help spread the mulch. And we know that it's that time of year and it's a lot of fun to get outside for, you know, an hour or two. And if you can spare some time, just let the Select Board's office know and they'll get in touch with the people that are organizing it and we'll get you down there. So lots of hands can help get that project done quicker. The Treasurer Collective would also like to remind the residents that the fourth quarter real estate taxes are due on May 1st, 2024. Transfer Station stickers will also be available for purchase on Tuesday, April 16th or happen, April 16th. And contact the DPW office with any questions at 508-947-9521. The DPW has scheduled a Hazardous Waste Day on May 18th and it's to be held at the Transfer Station. So if you'd like some additional information, please visit the town's website at www.lakevillema.org. Look for the details under the homepage, under the News tab. We still have a few vacancies on some of the Board's committees and commissions. Cable Advisory, Cemetery Commission, Energy Advisory, Parks Commission, Lakeville Arts Council and Open Space. And I know that you've been thinking about it, so now's the time. Send in your letter of interest right to the Select Board's office. And just a little fun fact, Assawamset Pond, which is across the street from the town offices, is the largest natural lake in Massachusetts covering 2,404 acres, which equates to about four square miles. Long Pond is the third largest natural lake in Massachusetts covering 1,729 acres. That would be why we're called Lakeville. Anybody else from the Select Board have something they'd like to add? Yes, Maureen?
I do. I have some sad news. Martha Mike Schroeder passed away in April. Mike lived in Lakeville since 1992 and she became our resident expert on all things botany in town. She was the original Lakeville Litter Lifter and was a fierce advocate of our rural character. When Alicia and I took over Lakeville Litter Lifters for her, she gave us all the pins, all the, all the little vests, everything that we could to use it. And she was so happy the tradition lives on. If you'd like to celebrate her life, she'd rather it not be with a moment of silence, but she'd rather it be with you getting rid of some of your lawn and planting a pollinator garden. So if anyone wants to honor her memory, scratch off a little of your grass in your yard and plant a garden.
Well, thank you, Maureen. I know Mike was just a pillar of our community. Really sorry to see and hear that news. Thank you. Anybody else? Yesterday was Lakeville Day. I forgot to mention that over at Ted Williams Camp. I did, you know, have a chance to stop in. Did anybody else?
Oh, I saw Leah. Yep, she was there.
I was there. Lots of people. Nice job, Mike. Nice job to Paula and Michelle, Melissa. Yeah, they did. Yeah, there was a lot of people there. It was great. Lots of folks. I wish the weather had cooperated, but I definitely think we're on to something. And a lot of people I talked to were like, this is so much nice just to have a place to come to do, you know, something, so. Yeah, and it was a beautiful day in March.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, yep. But the weather, you know, but people were still there, so, you know.
Anytime that we can have an event where people can gather and.
Yep. I think we're on to something. I think people like that kind of, you know, community stuff. That with the, also the trunk or treat last year. I mean, people are just looking, so we need to, we need to give that to them, so. Yeah, yep, yep. We were just talking about Lakeville Day. Saw you with your dog.
Oh, we did.
Oh, yeah.
Like an eagle with, you know.
It was like a snow globe.
Alright, Mr. Nunes, would you like to give us your town?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few things, a few meetings ago, we had discussed about getting department heads together to talk about capital projects. So what we've done is we created a project team consisting of the town administrator, the building commissioner, the facilities director, facilities manager, I should say, DPW Director and Assistant to the Town Administrator, the Town Administrator. So we get together, we had a meeting. What we will do is we'll probably meet once a month and we will put together a list of projects in excess of $5,000, whether it's equipment or just a general improvement project. We'll put that list together, we'll review it monthly, we'll keep an update on procurement, where it stands. And then we'll report back to, I'll report back to the Select Board with updates. You'll have the Excel document so we can keep track of all the projects that are going on, at least on the town side, in excess of $5,000, so.
That's excellent.
I know there's some kind of like, some departments don't know what other departments do. Now we will secure that information, put it together in one list and then provide it to the Select Board for discussion and review.
I have one question. $5,000, why did we pick $5,000?
That's kind of what we picked. Your rhyme or reason, just $5,000 sounds good.
Okay.
I don't think we need to track, you know, $1,000.
No, no, not at all. I was just, I was thinking because of the cost of things, maybe we're probably being a little inclusive on five at this point. You like paper clips.
Madam Chair, under number nine on your list, it says Select Board Member Day, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, Representative RRG and Assistant to the TA Review of 61A Writer First Refusal. Is that for a specific property? Did I miss that? Is that?
On that, on that one, probably two or three meetings ago, the Select Board had discussed about looking at the Chapter 61 policy.
Yep.
And the Board came to consensus that Member Day would represent the Board. And we talked, we met. I thought it was a good meeting. We talked about different scenarios. Representative Dave Golden from RRG will come back to our little working group, come back with some suggestions and then we'll report back to the Select Board.
Okay, was anything discussed about? I know it's a 61A policy, but we ran into last summer where something didn't exactly overlap with 61A. Remember that had come up?
That was the, that was the precipice of us having this discussion.
Right.
Because that property found a corner that we didn't include.
Yep, yep.
So, yeah, that was.
So, did you talk about trying to incorporate that in? Are we gonna wait and just see a policy in general?
I was gonna bring this up under Old Business, but we can do it now. Essentially, so what Dave recommended was we actually consider looking at potentially a, I'm gonna get the name wrong, but essentially a land acquisition review board of some kind. So that whether it was a 61 policy piece of property or somebody else just coming to us and saying, you wanna buy this, that's the first stop and they don't go beyond that until anything else.
Okay.
So that all of our boards and committees would know, like, if somebody's offering, you go talk to them.
Yep.
And they'll go through with some kind of matrix of things that we give them to say, this is important, this is not so important. And then that would just be an all encompassing of any land thing, but more to come on that.
Alright.
Dave didn't feel like updating the 61 policy specifically for that made sense because that's all set by state, you know, laws. But that we could broaden the overall process to include those such things with such a board.
Right, and what they do in the assessors is a little bit more specific and involved than what the rest of us do, but. And I think that, isn't that also the direction that we've asked the Treasurer to, or the Treasurer suggested, I think, to you and I, Bob, that when they're going to, when she feels like something needs to be sold, either tax title or whatever, to reach out to all the department heads so that, you know, we're not missing any.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
In fact, she sent out an email out today reminding department heads about some tax title properties. I think that's the second or third email she has sent out.
Yep, okay, alright.
Is this open for discussion or?
Yes, yeah.
I don't love the idea of another board deciding or ranking something like that because the people on that board will rank that priority based on where they live or how they feel about it. Because we've noticed that in these various times when we've had, you know, the hospital property, Freetown Street, Rocky Woods, all these things, there are people who care when it's near them and don't care when it's not. So I'm concerned about having a board made up of people who might say, well, it's not important because it's not near them. Excuse me, it's not near them as opposed to the Select Board who is elected by the town as a whole to handle stuff like this. So just something to bear in mind.
No, it's a, it's a good point. And I think that, you know, for this particular process in this board, like we, we were very clear when we were doing the 61 policy, that there has to be a set of criteria. Because when it first came to us, remember, we had a huge discussion about this, that, you know, is it a viable property and what makes it viable? And, you know, so we had pushed it a little further to say we could use a checklist to say, yes, it meets this criteria, it meets this criteria. So that it's, it's more objective than subjective when they're going through.
Yeah.
And I mean, it would involve, so I don't want to get ahead of your work, but it would involve.
There's more I could share, so.
Yeah.
If I may, Madam, Mr. Golden's gonna bring back some other examples, so like the town of Plymouth does this and says it's relatively successful. You know, it would be up to us to create the charge and the membership of any such board, so it wouldn't just be like, you know, random people that are upset with projects. It could be, pick anything. It could be somebody from Conservation or somebody from Open Space or somebody from Planning Board, whatever makes sense at the time. And then it wouldn't be a binding board by any means. It would still be up to the Select Board to make the final determination on, like, maybe there's some other reason we would or wouldn't go after some kind of.
Right, so I guess the only concern, like you just answered it, but the concern was, you know, if the boards, if this board deems it not important, then they wouldn't have to bring it to us or they wouldn't have to present it in a way that other people had, you know, the people above them, the town, whatever, had an option.
Yep.
So that was just the concern, wouldn't you agree?
Would it be that the board didn't present it or they didn't present it and apply their stamp of approval to it?
Well, this would be all.
Present everything, right?
Hopefully they would present everything. And these would all be details we'd have to flush out if we want to go this route. But my personal thought would be like, whether they recommend or don't recommend, they present.
Yeah.
And based on.
That was my concern.
Yep, I agree 100% that, you know, just to share the information is the good part, but yeah.
Not just disappear into ether and it would be heard of again.
Okay, yep. I think that was the only thing that I just, I didn't want to get too far ahead, but I just wanted to be sure.
Madam Chair, and if the Select Board decides to go in that direction, the Land Acquisition Committee will do a lot of the work for the necessary boards for the Select Board. So when it comes to the Select Board, it'll all be in place and rather than, you know, we'll refer to it for another meeting because we've gotta do additional research. This Land Acquisition Committee, again, if we go forward with that type of committee, would do a lot of that legwork.
It is very helpful, you know, it makes it easier when the things are brought here because we might not know.
Right.
Somebody, having that done is great.
A few other things. Several weeks ago, Facilities Manager Pauline and I took a drive out to Betty's Neck. First time I've been there. Beautiful, quite impressed. We had a nice little tour of the Peach Barn. I know that is currently on renovation, but the access road to there was pretty, in really tough shape. And it would be very difficult for an ambulance, fire truck, police cruisers to go out there in cases of medical emergency or any other type of emergency. I reached out, so I reached out to DPW Director, the Fire Chief, a few other folks, Nancy Yates. And I think the best route that became the best solution would be for the Fire Chief, Chief O'Brien, and he's already reached out to the owner of the Cranberry Bogs. So they have committed to fixing the road, at least, you know, filling in some of the holes. This is, you know, a busy season, so hopefully that will be done in a short order. So I just wanted to present that to the Board. And the last item, Senator Roderick's called my office several times regarding a local priority project. I know he's done this in the past. It's an early thing. It's a funded project within the state budget for fiscal year '25 and because there are so many ADA issues that are still outstanding, consultation with the Select Board. You've got an ADA grant for the Historic Library would be in order. As you know, we have applied several times to the state for a grant for that project. It was denied. It's a ready to go project, shovel ready. So Senator Roderick thought that would be a good project to include in the state budget. So hopefully it'll make its way through the legislative process. He'll let us know probably in the fall, early winter.
And that's worth about $48,000, correct?
Anywhere between $50,000 to $100,000, the priority would. And I think the bids came in, I think at $48,000, something like that. So that was a while back. I'm sure the costs have gone up, but again, that will go up to bid and all the design is ready to go.
And it takes it off our capital plan for years to come.
Yep.
That's it.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else for some news? Okay, you have Select Board minutes in front of you for April 17th. Did everybody have a chance to go through them? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by roll call. Baby and I.
Donahue, aye.
Carboni, aye. Candido, aye.
They aye.
Thank you. And we'll move the April 18th to the next meeting.
Good.
Thank you, Tracy, very much. Okay, now we're gonna revisit the ARPA.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, so here's the latest update. The Assistant to the Town Administrator, myself, had a very productive conversation on Thursday with representatives of CLA, our accounting firm, of the accounting firm working with Plymouth County. They told us what would be eligible, what's not eligible, how to use the portal. So tomorrow Christina and I will be meeting with Todd, our town accountant, to relay a lot of the things that we were told. We needed an update from the accountant, from Todd, where he is on kind of following these projects, both from Plymouth County and from the federal government direct payment part of ARPA. So that is where we stand. I have really nothing new to report, but at our next meeting, if it's okay with the Chair and putting the agenda together, we will have Todd and Christina at the meeting and we will tell you what projects are eligible, what projects are not eligible. Some of the projects on the list may not be eligible. We still need clarification, but we will have that information for you at our next meeting.
Okay.
Madam Chair, a suggestion? That we probably do a vote of ranking of second, third choices? Are we able to do that? Like, as far as if we have other ARPA projects that we could continue to do with the money if the ones that we're looking for fall through?
Yeah.
Could we have a nice little rank choice vote where, you know, we can have this so you can just turnkey it and go? Because I'm worried we're not, I'm worried we're gonna run out of time.
Yeah, I don't see why not. Is there, pretty logical, I guess, for the ones?
I was just gonna ask, on a similar vein, when you're going through the list, if it's not too much trouble to identify, is this a purchase or a project, right? Because I think you would identify later, like, if it's, if it's an item we buy, that's relatively a whole big quick turnaround. If it's a project, how, roughly estimated, how long a project is it? And when could it start and be completed? Could it be completed this fiscal year? Or, sorry, not much of this fiscal year, this calendar year? Have to go next calendar year because some projects really can only happen starting in the spring through the summer.
Yeah, like create a little matrix.
Yeah, just to figure out like, which ones, what's our confidence level in getting these things done? The purchases, probably easy, but the projects get a little more.
Yeah, I just wanna pull every nickel that we can into the town and, but not cause us to, you know, be at risk at all possible and to have to expend more money to get these projects if at all possible.
Yeah, it appears that some of the projects are not gonna be approved, so we will have another opportunity to vote on projects or whatever, whatever we decide to do.
Is that just the county side or federal as well?
It seems like the county is a little more stringent than the federal, which I don't understand because it's all federal ARPA money. It could be just that the commissioners are kind of maybe.
They have their own.
Yeah, they have their own, you know, they're following within the federal guidelines, but.
It was the same for the cares.
They wanna look at maybe a little, maybe communities and probably kind of to look at things a little differently maybe, so. But we will have it all ironed out for our next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Okay, next item, we have to, in front of us, we have a, I guess, a little graph, more of a graph or just a table of, for the vote to fund four of the firefighters with the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds for FY '25. Because I know that the chief had come in front of us. We've already approved before for FY '24 through ARPA funding. And there's intention to apply for the SAFER grant to cover those. And do we know, I forgot to ask the question, how long does the SAFER grant?
It's three years.
It's three years, okay. I couldn't remember if it was two or three. But in order to get us through that threshold, because I believe it's the end of November or something.
June 30th?
That they have to.
Yeah.
For the grant, the SAFER grant is awarded.
It's in the fall sometime.
It's in the fall, right?
It's in the fall.
So in order to get us through, you know, the first hurdle going into FY '25 with the staff looking to utilize ARPA funds to cover the cost for the four firefighters for the fiscal year. If you could speak with that.
Yeah, Chief O'Brien would have been here this evening, but he's not feeling too well, but he is watching. So yes, Todd, our town accountant, suggested that we take a vote to authorize the use of ARPA funds for four firefighters for fiscal year '25. As you said, Madam Chair, Chief O'Brien and his team have applied for a SAFER grant and hopefully we will be awarded the SAFER grant for three years. And that will release, that will free up some of the ARPA funds.
What happens if we're not awarded the SAFER grant?
If we're not awarded the SAFER grant, then the ARPA funds will probably be good for a year, one fiscal year and then the Select Board will have to make a tough decision what to do for fiscal year '26.
So they'd be good until next June?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, this will be good, yes.
Can they?
It's $267,173 for a fiscal year.
Okay, and then if, assuming, or, I'm sorry, excuse me, I don't want to speak this into existence. If they don't get it this year, can they still apply next year as well?
For SAFER?
Yes.
Good question, not sure.
Okay.
Not, not sure on how often SAFER grant opens up.
Just trying to see how.
I'm sure Chief O'Brien will get back to you, but that's a good question. I will make sure I follow up tomorrow.
Got it, Chief.
He's texting right now. Thank you, Chief. He writes yes, whatever that means.
They can apply next year. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Save me. We'll have to do that tomorrow.
Okay.
One, one question, Madam Chair. So if we authorize this and then we do, I'll try to be positive, we do get the SAFER grant, can we reallocate that? January, whatever the month is.
Yes, yes. I think so long as it's done by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a little, small window that we have.
Yep.
So positive energy for a SAFER grant.
And that would be the same question for me is like, we would have to have something, shovel ready to go.
Yep.
If, you know, if the, you know, the SAFER grant gets picked up.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the use of ARPA funding for $267,173.42.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by roll call. Baby, aye.
Donahue, aye.
Carboni, aye. Candido, aye.
They aye.
Okay. Okay, next in front of us is the request for Mass Housing for comments in regards to the proposed development located at 43 Main Street, which is the hospital property. There is a 200-unit apartment building proposed that would fall under the 40B designation. And they are requesting part of the process comments from the local municipality. And through this conversation tonight, I will be asking this letter be sent to whoever we decide, you know, whoever. I just want to make sure that our other boards and committees and commissions have an opportunity to weigh in. So there was part of the process, there was a site walk. I think that we all were notified of that. I did have an opportunity to attend. A Member Day was there also. So we met with Mass Housing. We had a couple of Planning Board members also in attendance. And I have to say, in the, in the 30 years that I've lived in Lakeville, I never stepped foot on that property. So this was really a, you know, kind of a new thing for me. But we did walk the site and this particular request for comments is specifically just for that 200-unit apartment building. They are requesting that these comments are submitted by Thursday, May 16th. And I did ask the question if they should be submitted all together in one packet. Then that would be very helpful. It doesn't necessarily have to be that way, but I think it would be very helpful for them. So once we, you know, talk about who we want to make sure that, you know, has an opportunity to weigh in, designate the direction to send them into the Select Board's office so that our Select Board Office can prepare the response. So in front of you is the letter and also the comprehensive permit site approval application. So, Member Day, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I mean, the walkthrough was eye opening. It was also my first time on the property. And even though we're specifically talking about the 40B part of it, as we know, the owner is looking to do a couple of other by right developments there. And what you see from the road is nothing. The property is massive once you got feet in there and you're walking around. And I would just be happy, because from what I understand, their plan is to demo the entire thing, even though they might only be doing the 40B first, the whole demo would take place first. And just getting some sight lines and stuff in there would be nice because it's just so overgrown right now. It's, it's a tough, tricky parcel, for sure.
I had one comment back three years ago before they demoed. They were going to take the children off the children's ward, that structure before they demoed. Is that still the plan? And I don't remember. I don't remember exactly what was gonna go on with them, but it was supposed to be some type of heritage preservation. I don't remember exactly what was gonna go on with them, but it was supposed to be some type of heritage preservation.
They were talking about that, the old children's ward, um, they weren't sure if it was the entire top with all the, um, figures or just the decorative stained glass windows over there, but they were aware of the fact that they want something. And also just if you don't mind saying is, um, it looks like even if things go to plan, they don't plan to demo until next calendar year. And that's a four to six month prog- process. So that's a long ways away from seeing anything happen there. But I was pleased that, um, we were carboni and I notified them that we had in the proposed budget for FY twenty five is paving of Rhode Island Road. And now we go right where one of their driveways would be on Rhode Island Road. And they're now in discussions with DPW director to make sure they try to stub into their utilities first. So that we don't pave the road and then they come back and dig it all up to get utilities. So they're gonna try to work that all together. So that was nice of them to do.
One more question.
Did, did we ever, and I wasn't here for it, did we ever talk about the possibility of this being a forty R?
That's still old business, still going on, yep. We can talk about that later.
All right, thank you.
Uh, just can some, can you clarify what the difference is between forty R and forty B? I've heard it many times.
Forty R is forty B with a check. So.
A check for.
A check for the town. So we get paid in two different ways if we get a forty R. So we get a bonus payment for every time we get a certificate of occupancy for a forty R unit. Um, and then we get paid every time the child from those units attends one of our schools. So the bonus payment used to be three thousand and then that was a quick, you know, a one-time bonus payment. And then the three thousand per student, per year goes under the forty S payment. And so you heard Mr. Nunes talk about, you know, our six hundred thousand dollars in forty, is it six? Six hundred thousand dollars, they have forty S payments this year, that goes to that. So even though it does not offset obviously the cost, there is, there is a, a dollar value associated with it. With forty B, we get that.
May I add some more to that, Madam Chair?
Please.
So the, um, in addition to, to everything that Maureen said, forty R is supposed to be a proactive approach. Where it's like, hey, if you're gonna have a forty B type development, here's where you want it to be. And there's stipulations around how to do that, whereas forty B is just they come in and do what they want. So the concept being like you put a forty R in place and then they come in and utilize that zoning and then absolute perfect. So for two hundred units, you'd get a check for six hundred thousand dollars right up front. You wouldn't use it for operational costs because it's a one-time deal. But then every year you then get the check for each student that comes out of that development where forty B get nothing at all. You just get a lot of units.
And I'm assuming it's the state that's paying the check.
Yes.
It is. They have a, a fund that there's only one other town that totally.
I think it's two now.
I think there's two others.
Two other funds, but it was fully funded this year. And I know it had been funded a little less for the last few years, so it was very nice to see it fully funded as, as was intended. Um, back in the, back in the inception.
If it hadn't been fully funded this year, we'd still be looking for another quarter million dollars.
Yeah.
Somewhere.
One-time funds.
Yeah.
So as far as, uh, select board comments, um, I, I know that we did bring up, um, water allocation. Because with the two previous projects that were looking to be presented there, um, I believe that they had done water allocations based on those projects. So when we were, um, doing the walkthrough, um, I asked about, you know, what their intentions were. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, that they planned on doing a new, uh, water allocation. Um, so that water would come from Middleborough, I think it's Taunton.
Yeah, they're trying to do Taunton.
Yeah, and we're down to our last.
It would come from Taunton.
Taunton's got a sixteen inch line over there on the road. And middle was like an eight inch high pressure on.
Got it. And was there septic as well on one oh five anywhere?
They talked about there were septic lines that, um, came into a certain point, but never utilized.
Sewer lines.
Sewer lines.
Sewer lines.
Yeah, and I thought those went down Bridge Street. I don't know about that, but of the, a layer, a layer, a layer on our G I S.
They'd indicated that their, um, water treatment plant would be of all things on top of the old landfill that's at the hospital site, so.
And they are still planning to?
Yes.
Dig that up or cap that?
Nope.
Dig it up and get it out.
That's good news.
Yep. So if that's their direction to get, um, where I, I don't know how much, I forget what the formula is to figure out how much water per person per day. But we're down to our last hundred thousand, right? Isn't that what we had decided, figured out, Brian?
Yeah, I've actually got the allocation list open here. We are, they did tell, um, the rain, they have new load letters soonish. But there's already multiple allocations in place for forty three Main Street today. So it's a matter of, do they need more than what's already allocated?
Okay.
Or can we just consolidate the existing allocations into a smaller number, I guess?
Because then they're, I mean, it's not just for the apartment, it's for the entire complex.
Right, but for this particular.
Right, they're gonna do the hospital would have had a much heavier load.
Project, right.
It's like almost forty thousand.
I mean, if the other thing is an assisted living, I don't know if that's.
Assisted living has a higher load than residential.
Than residential.
But it was a hospital at one time, so it's probably got the max load.
Anyways.
Capacity anyways.
Yeah, so I guess we may have to at some point. We're down to our last hundred thousand gallons, Bob. I don't know if it, if we should make a call prematurely to Taunton Water or.
Doesn't hurt, doesn't ever hurt to sit down.
Point, right, they had said that, you know, they would be willing to work with us, like, with the marijuana companies to bill them directly and not, not have it go through our allocation, because.
It was significant. I remember seeing that those numbers were.
Yeah, a lot, so it may not be a bad idea for us to just make a phone call and say, you know, we're at this very early stage.
Being proactive, yeah.
Yeah, no sense in blindsiding Taunton Water and saying, you know, hey, by the way.
All of it.
Yeah, we want it all. And I mean, we don't make that money, it's just we have to keep an eye on our allocation. So as far as, um, the comments, I, I would, I mean, I would suggest, um, that we get this. Ninety-something, wasn't it ninety-something, Brian, that we had left?
I just messed up my tables, I'm trying to.
Sorry.
All right, thank you, I'll do that. We'll do that.
So I would suggest that this get to the police, you know, the police chief, the fire chief, planning board, conservation, um, building. Who else? Well, I mean, I think it should go to all department heads, just, I think that should be a good practice going forward.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I know everything has to go through the clerk's office, but should all this come true, you know? Clerk's gonna have to provide services, so everyone should at least know, have the opportunity.
And when we say go to everyone, we just mean, um.
The letter.
You know what? No one needs to physically print it out.
Yeah, no. Madam Chair.
Yes. It's gone to all those people you've already suggested.
Excellent.
Unless it went to open space.
Excellent.
Okay. Um, so I can just send it out to the department heads. Yep.
Fantastic.
And I ask them all to submit the comments to us.
Thank you. Already ahead of it. Glad to hear it.
Tracy, do you, oh, I'm sorry. Tracy, do you ever use Google forms, like survey forms, so you don't have to populate? No, I don't. I don't know if we, is that like a subscription you have to buy?
We probably have access to another better version.
Yeah, yeah, I think you can use the unpair type of model. I think it would just be easier on you. Yeah, I don't know if I have it, to be honest with you.
I will continue. We're on the sidebar.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I didn't have a chance to like read through everything on the apartments. Is there like a makeup, is there any fifty-five and older?
No age restriction.
Nothing like that, so it's.
Strictly apartment, yep. Open.
And they're all rentals, so they all count towards the subsidized housing.
They all count, um. Is there an afford, there's gotta be an affordable component.
Yes.
Do we know how many?
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Right, isn't the, the forty B is, um, twenty and the forty R is twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Or it's twenty to twenty-five, it all depends.
Yes, rentals and all that.
So it's twenty percent and it's by phase, so they can't do like one phase and say, oh, we didn't do any affordable this phase. Every phase has to have that twenty percent.
Yeah.
So that would be forty units at twenty percent.
But it's a regional price, so it's not like someone's gonna walk into a seven hundred and fifty dollar apartment or anything. They're still gonna be looking at.
No.
Eighty percent.
Yeah, it's eighty percent of the, the current market rate, which is.
I still don't know how that's considered affordable, because.
They deem it as affordable for the area.
Right.
Because I called the lady Kat Kit, Kat?
Kat.
Kat, I called her today, I had some questions. Affordable to the area, it's not affordable to the area. I don't understand.
Right.
Why they keep doing this because it's not making it affordable.
Yeah, I mean, it, well, we, we actually have a pretty high median income for Lakeville, but, you know. But it's still not affordable in my opinion for a family of four.
Yeah, Madam Chair, one of the things that we've seen in the area is some of these units that get put on the S H I, then they can't even find a buyer in the first twelve months for them, so then they have to, for the purchase ones at least. So then they, then it comes off the ranks.
So the reason they can't, oh, go ahead. The reason they can't find the buyer is because they've made the requirement for the down payment be so high. And the, the requirement for the salary to be so low. There are very little people sitting around with a forty-three thousand dollar salary with twenty percent to put down in cash.
This is not feasible.
Right, and it creates, just like you said, a complete unstable system for them to not be able to, uh, to do anything with.
So my point is, can we comment on that?
But it's all rentals, so it's all rentals, so it avoids that.
Yeah, but it's still a pretty high amount of money for the affordable component.
Comment anything we want.
Yeah, we can say anything.
Yeah.
They'll take all comments into consideration. I mean, we know this from all the affordable housing and the, for sale housing and everything else, so, you know.
I agree.
But hey, so what do, how would you like to, I, I don't know.
Individual people comment or boards comment? Is that the, the goal? Is this for individual people to submit their comments on different boards or boards to vote and comment?
I think the, the boards vote and comment. But again, you could be an individual sending your own comments. Send your own comments as a resident, so, you know. But I think as a select board, um, we should decide that how we wanna respond. Cause I know we've done that in the past.
Hi, what's going on?
All one survey that I created for the health benefits, I can create with Tracy that same link. And then it's a link that goes out and anybody can just click on it and put their comments in. And then Tracy, everything goes into that one report.
Awesome.
Is it anonymous or are they required to log in in some way?
It is anonymous.
I wouldn't do it then.
Yeah, you wouldn't do it.
We can, we can.
Too much, too much possibility of astroturfing negative comments.
You can create it so that they activate in how, in order to comment. You can, you can.
Yeah.
Make the survey that way if you want.
Plus, um, we've already had, I think, uh, or at least a couple of people have said to me, they're confusing affordable. And that's why I'm talking about it. Affordable is not.
All the time.
Section eight housing either, you know, so it's a different. So I, I think some folks are already.
There's that educational component.
Yeah, they're very charged terms.
Yes.
Yep, yep, so I think, you know, boards should give their opinion as a board. But if anyone has an individual opinion, I think if they're an elected or staff member, they, you know, can certainly, as a resident, go to whatever we said earlier for the.
Yep. Yes, sorry.
Are we allowed to attach, um, the image that they provided of what they were thinking, like the layout that they had in mind?
That, didn't that go out?
I don't know if that was confidential.
They updated their website too, so the new layout is there, uh, just forty-three mainstreet dot com, I believe. They've got a master plan there that, but that encompasses all of the project.
Yes.
So you just have to focus on the center part, which is the forty B.
So it's forty-three Main Street spelled out?
Uh, four, three, and then Main Street spelled out.
Dot com?
I think so, I'm trying to verify that, but the internet is not interneting.
Just wanna confirm, because I'd like to make sure that it's clear that our residents know that it's forty-three mainstreet dot com.
It's forty-three ma- S T dot com.
Oh, S T.
Thank you.
Okay, that's how it's forty-three S T dot com, not spelled out street, okay.
See, now it works.
All right, so that's to see the project, they wanted to make sure that there was a vehicle in which the residents could, you know, kinda check in and see, you know, where they are. Um, but with regards to what we're discussing tonight, Mass Housing is the, um, agency that's looking for, you know, for comments. So if there are residents, uh, that are interested in sending comments, um, we can make sure that we put that up. Well, I'll just say it now, um, it would be K Miller, K M I L L E R at masshousing dot com. If you have comments, and please in the subject line, you just wanna put, um, propose forty B dash forty-three Main Street, and that's Lakeville, MA. And it's M H I D number one, two, two, three. So if that was way too fast for you to write that all down, um, I, you can just give the call to the select board's office.
Yeah, I can put it on our website tomorrow.
Okay.
Under the news tab.
All right.
Under the news tab.
Suggestion.
If we were considering voting tonight, I would like to see what our other boards and committees have to say for votes. Because I might have more to add to it as a board, like, I wouldn't pretend to know that I'm thinking of it from all angles. Um, I think it would give more weight to something that we all believe in if we got all of the answers together from Tracy and then voted on what our comments would be, but that's just my suggestion.
Well, these comments have to go back on the sixteenth, it's a timeline.
Got it.
We don't have a meeting until the twentieth, so.
Understood.
But I, I understand what you're saying too.
Yeah, no, no, that's okay.
You know, I mean, our, we did, I think we talked about, um, you know, with the rental that, um, you know, how, and I wasn't sure how the other forty, um, the areas such as Sterling and Kensington, um, how the bus route went, did they go into that area to pick up the, the students? Or did they pick them up on Route one oh five, which I was not comfortable with? So I had made the suggestion that, and they had said that they were talking to the school about hopefully, you know, trying to accommodate. I would think that they would set up a bus stop there, they have to walk their kids to.
Interior.
Right, you know, something, so they are aware of that, and that was.
It's a great comment, yeah.
You know, something that was, you know, my first thought was, okay, we would have students being picked up here. And, you know, that end of one oh five is, is really busy, so. One oh five is very busy anyways, but, um, so, all right, comments, um. I mean, if everybody's okay with that, I'd like to include that, just making sure that there's, um, opportunity for um, student pickup onsite, not on Route one oh five.
Oh, are we adding suggesting things?
Yep.
Uh, I think that we should, or they should at least try to, um, consider prioritizing veterans and veteran families when they're renting. As a, because there was a comment, there was a comment in it that has started to rub me the wrong way because of how this has started to affect, you know, our country and everything, which I'd get might be a bit dramatic. But it's, um, promotes diversity. It's page twenty-two of twenty-five, under two, advance equity and make efficient decisions. Provide technical and strategic support for inclusive community planning and decision-making to ensure social, economic, and environmental justice. Ensure that interest of future generations are not compromised by today's decisions. One of them says promote diversity and social equity and improves the neighborhood. Um, that phrase is being used in a lot of ways to justify a lot of really awful things. And I think that the best thing for Lakeville's future would be to incorporate the group of people who kind of already live here and are used to a life like this, which typically includes families like veterans, people who are similar and live a similar life to what we have now. Because if you take someone from the city, um, and, and bring them here, we've seen this with people who move here voluntarily. It's a way of life that they might not be used to, and then they start complaining and they wanna pass laws and they wanna do things to change it to be how they, how it was where they left. Do you know what I mean?
So would you phrase it for veterans and current residents of Lakeville to get preference if possible?
I would just phrase it as veterans, like a veteran, I think that we should give preferential, um. I would just phrase it as veterans, like a veteran, I think that we should give preferential um renting rights to veterans or, you know, the families of veterans or people serving.
Is there any legality issues making requests?
They do it with jobs and hiring in certain places. I'm not.
I just don't, I'm thinking of the housing.
Yeah.
Well, we can certainly, you know, add a comment that you, you know, you'd like preference, you know, to, you know, local um, residents and, um, you know, veterans.
Better, I mean, because we're, we also have to consider the developments that have already put, been put in. And if I understand it correctly, a lot of our calls for our police station are going to those developments, correctly, correct?
Hmm, no.
It used to be for Sterling and Kensington.
For minor things. The last time, unless things have changed, the last I talked to a police chief, he doesn't see a significant number of calls that affect the neighborhood, I guess he'd say.
Well, it used to be in the, way back in the twenty twenty.
Yeah, then that's good. But it's just, that's one thing where, you know, it's considering that, you know, this wasn't, this ad- adaptation to the environment maybe wasn't working, and that's what was leading to it. So we don't wanna add more, and we don't wanna tax the police system more if we can help it.
It's a slippery slope.
Well, now I feel dumb about mine. I'm gonna be to make it aesthetically pleasing and keeping with the rural neighborhood feel.
Yeah, but you know that's important too. Yeah, and to make sure the, you know, the landscape is uh made up of, uh, you know, non-toxic, non, uh, you know, native uh plantings and no invasive species. Um, and, you know, being very uh visually friendly from the street. Cause we've, we've lived with eyesore for a very long time. I would love to have something that's functional and that's, you know, aesthetically within keeping of the rural yet traditional flavor.
So with all of our comments, I'm just will pointing them here, and I think that any individual might wanna reach out to Tracy after we vote um, to, for clarification on how that's gonna be worded.
Sure.
Cause I, I think you're, you hit something there, cause that was a bylaw that we passed is, you know. For what it looks like when they're building. But I can't even think of the word now.
Conditions.
There were conditions or, um.
Come on, Tracy, I know you got it.
It's right there. It's right there.
I'm thinking South Yarmouth.
We have a bylaw in place for um design.
Architectural design.
Yes, yeah, standards.
Yeah, there you go. Brian, did you have anything you'd like to add for comments?
No, I'll probably send mine in individually if that's okay. I mean, I'm just, as far as eligibility goes, knock it down and get started.
Alright. Alright, so I'll entertain a motion um to submit comments to Mass Housing. Um, we have uh preference uh for Lakeville residents and and veterans. Um, having bus stop onsite.
For kids, be specific on.
Oh, yeah, for um school bus.
Yeah.
Um, and landscaping, um, keeping it rural and.
Architectural.
Yep.
Design standards.
Not, non-invasive species.
Non-invasive species.
Okay. Alright, Leah, did you have anything?
I'm good.
Do I hear a second or do I hear? I made the motion, but why you? So moved, alright, excellent.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those um signify by roll call.
Baby and I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
Candy, I.
Oh, Dave's doing.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next we're gonna discuss uh place articles on the annual and special town meeting warrants. Um, so we have a couple of motions that we'll have to perform. Um, the special town meeting has one warrant article. And the annual has proposed twelve, yes, twelve warrant articles. So, um, in front of you, you have a draft of the special town meeting warrant article. Um, I guess I'll read it real quick. This article one is to see if the town will vote to transfer from unused balances of the capital projects identified below. The sum of, I'd like to um request an edit to fifty four thousand, cause that's what was the total of those. I don't know if I'm seeing anything different. And to transfer twenty five thousand from the overlay surplus for the capital projects stated below and anything incidental or relative thereto or take and other action relative thereto. So basically what this um article is, it's unused capital um projects balances um to close and then transfer that money um into the capital projects um that would be listed in the annual.
In layman's terms, leftover money from other projects to fund new projects.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll entertain a, uh, um, I'll entertain a motion to place Article one on the special town meeting warrant on June tenth, twenty twenty four, and approve and sign the warrant.
So move, you objecting?
No.
Oh, okay.
So seconded.
Discussion?
Yes.
When we went through the budget for capital, I, I, correct me please if I misremember. I thought a few of us had had concern over whether or not thirty nine thousand was enough for an E C O truck replacement?
No, it was thirty four thousand. It wasn't enough, and we bumped it up.
Okay, I don't remember that part. Now, gets us a green communities compliant vehicle?
Well, it doesn't need to be, cause it's a working vehicle.
But you should be able to look at the green community specs and say, this is what we're targeting. So I think that's, we will do that um before it's purchased, and um as we know, there's some money in the gift accounts, so. Alright, anything above the thirty nine thousand, we could go into that account. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had one thing. Um, on the second line down where it says select board, it says feasibility study. Um, I would like it named what feasibility study that was for. So I didn't have a chance to go back to the annual town meeting for that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll do that.
And then everything else, I think, is good. Um, and just for those um that might be watching this evening, um, once this is approved, this will get up and and be placed on our town website so that you can review it, and we are planning on scheduling warrant review so that, um, you know, we'll go through each one with the finance committee. Alright, so we have a motion to second head discussion. Any further discussion?
Just that we still have our posting locations too, right?
Yes, that's still in here.
Yes, it is listed uh at the end.
Yes, so, just so people know. Yes, so this um will be fourteen days um before the appointed special town meeting, and it will be posted uh the town office building, the Nemasket Week, Baldi's, Fat Cousins, the Clark Shores Association Bulletin Board, the Pontiac Regional High School, the Lakeville Senior Center, and Assam Womsted Elementary School.
Mention.
Yes.
In compensation for the town clerk today, um, we removed the Nemasket Week because we've never ever put a newspaper in our town warrant, just in case there's an error and we have to use a different paper, um, that would preclude us from doing so, so she thought it would be best to remove it.
That's gonna be a vote of the select board. That's not for her to decide, that's the select board to decide.
Yeah, we never put that in there.
I know, we've had that discussion, but it's on the agenda tonight.
Right, right.
Yep, so when we get to that, we'll decide.
So we have that motion, right?
Yep, and, alright, so all those.
Hold on, I'm confused. Uh, the Nemasket Week is written in this.
Right, that's why.
So if we vote to approve this, we're approving it in there?
Yes.
Yes, well, it's not, do what you want, but it is on the agenda under old business this evening. So whether or not you vote now or at the end of the meeting, if you vote no Nemasket Week, it will be taken off.
I apologize to the board. This was the first time that I had heard this um in front of the board, so as far as I'm concerned, I, we didn't get anything official to request it to come out of this posting, so. Um, but we'll discuss that further on, but as we're going along right now, this is what we have in front of us, um, so that's what we're voting on.
Thank you.
Um, so votes, please, and roll call.
Baby and I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
Candy, I.
Day, I.
Thank you. And then moving on to the annual, um, like I said, there are twelve, um, I don't, do I really, do we need to go through them?
I can briefly go through them as you want to.
Yes, please.
Article one is the fiscal year twenty five budget. Article two is the park department budget. Article three is the transfer station budget. Article four is the capital budget. Article five is um for the purpose of adding a hundred fifty thousand dollars to the stabilization front. That'll be from free cash. Article six is to uh purpose of adding to the O P E B account. That'll be free cash of three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Article seven is the community preservation fund budget. Article eight is uh, Article eight and nine are two projects funded from community preservation funds. Article eight is the historic town hall door replacement. Article nine is the cupola repairs for the Lakeville Historical Museum. Article ten is funding six hundred and fifty five thousand for design development costs and related expenses for the construction of a new fire station, any, anything incidental. Uh, and that will come from the capital stabilization account. And Article eleven is to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Lakeville code bylaws by delining in its entirety. Chapter two seventy, sections two seven zero dash seven point five, mixed use development district regulations. And Article twelve is a citizen petition. Uh, it states that no person shall hold at one time the office of select board and the office of assessor or planning board in the town of Lakeville, and that was a petition article from residents of the town.
Recently?
What's that?
Recent, late this year?
Yes.
Last election.
Cause we do have a general bylaw um in place right now that says that, um, you know, can't, if you're holding the select board's office, you can't hold that of the assessors, so.
So that was repealed, but it's not listed in the codification as repealed.
When was that repealed?
Twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen. I was looking, I was looking it up before the the meeting. It's not in the new codification, but it was in the old statutes that it had been repealed. So it might be something funky.
Was that, was that a state restriction that was lifted or our local?
It was local. Um, the finance committee is also local.
Yeah, they've got a bunch of stuff in there too.
Yeah, the, the finance committee is very restrictive, and that's all locally restrictive.
Can we look that up?
Twenty eighteen or so. Tracy, do you remember?
So again, twenty eighteen or seventeen could be twenty eleven for me now.
I don't either. And I've looked at that many times. I don't remember it being repealed. Because if it has been repealed, then this isn't even legit, no.
Well, the citizens did file it, so it has to be on the warrant. And I think whether or not you can do it or not, that will be discussed at town meeting.
As written.
Yeah, it has to be.
It has to be as written. Written, written, written. God, it's gotta be as written.
Yeah.
I will look that up.
And then even if it is voted on, the attorney general's office will review and make sure that everything is still, you know, that it's lawful. So, alright, um, I guess we'll entertain a motion um to place the twelve articles.
I'll make the motion to place Article one through twelve in the annual town meeting warrant on June tenth, twenty twenty four, and approve and sign the warrant.
Alright, I hear a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, um, roll call vote, please.
Baby and I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
Candy, I.
Day, I.
Thank you very much. Next, um, I'd ask to put this on here, uh, cause I had received a couple of questions about the select board hours. So historically, the um select board has been holding an hour at the senior center, uh, sen- senior center at ten o'clock on the second Friday of every month. So, um, we had done like a rotational schedule before, and if one of us couldn't make the time that we were scheduled for, we would reach out to the other members, and then somebody always, um, you know, would step in and and cover that hour, so, um, I know with two new members here, we'd like to be able to rotate, um, everybody into a s- a schedule.
True.
So, um.
Madam Chair, I forget if it's a specific like third Friday or what.
The second Friday.
Second Friday.
Friday always.
Yep, at ten o'clock. So I guess, um, Leah, you are.
Yeah, so I can usually fill in even on last minute, so, you know, if you're not sure or whatever, you can still pick a date. And then, you know, I, I go there plenty of times, so you still wanna go and I, you, I can give up mine, I, you can work with me specifically, but, um, it's, uh, you, you get all kinds of things. I've had people come in with lists. I've had no one come in and I just hang out and have coffee with the seniors, which is always fun. Um, they have opinions too. It's really nice to, you know, um, they like to give guidance, and I think sometimes it's, you know, nice to listen to those things, but um, occasionally people from not the senior center will come in and um, also Representative Oral and Senator Roderick. They, either they themselves or their aides will go once a month, so it's something that some folks who follow know about. So, um, yeah, but it's good. And then sometimes there's blood pressure checks. It's nice to play who's got the highest blood pressure. It's usually whatever select board member is there at that time. But that doesn't say anything about the job, does it? But yeah, so look at your calendars and, you know, let Laurie know and Laurie Fahey and maybe the rest of us and, you know, and if that, that week you don't think you can make it, let me know and I can usually fill in.
So we'll just reach out to Laurie and, um, she'll give us what, um, dates are are available if they were not already assigned, and we can slide in there, and then, um, we can ask Laurie to give us a, um, you know, just a, an update of.
Yep, I'm always available for company. Um, I don't mind if someone's like, hey, let's go together for the first time. I can do that too.
Laurie or. I have a question.
Yeah.
Are, is the assessors still going and doing their rotation?
Um, they have a couple of people, but, um, I know that Nancy Yates had gone from uh CPC to help folks file the exemption on the CPC tax. I'm not sure when the last time the assessors went to do the.
I have to tell you, that's the one I got the most positive feedback on.
Yeah.
Is, um, you know, for the, uh, for the abatements.
Yeah.
So a lot of seniors out there don't know that they're eligible.
And the exemptions, yeah, the exemptions.
They have exemptions for like the CPC, um, so having the assessors there and having them be able to educate the seniors was really.
I try to do that, cause I don't know that the assessors, I don't, I honestly don't know. I don't think they've done a formal one, and I would love it if they would, um, but I try to go during, before those deadlines and, you know.
Yeah.
To let everyone know.
Rotating in, we have the department heads rotating in, or, you know, some of the department heads. Um, I would love to see, you know, D P W go in there one time. You know, a lot of people have questions, um, and getting it straight from the horse's mouth is always better than guessing the answers.
Yep, so just for a bit of information, um, I, when I was on the board of assessors, um, I had done some research, and we here in Lakeville, we're getting a higher percentage of seniors that were fi- filling out the exemptions and receiving the exemptions. And I think it's just because we were putting the information out there.
Yep.
And some of those exemptions don't cost us money, cause we get reimbursement from the state, whatever, um, but, uh, you know.
Yeah, we do great, but we can always do better, right?
Yeah, we should always do better, yeah, yeah.
Should we consider?
Should we consider sending like a notice to all the seniors in town or people who are over a certain age that this exists? Cause not all of them.
There is something that's written up in the newsletter, but a lot of, it would, you know, and we'll, we'll, you know, we can talk to the assessors about that.
Yeah.
You know, having them, they used to go do a formal thing and I'm not sure they've been or, and, and I, I shouldn't really speak to it, but.
And the tax collectors used to go for one day for collecting. I don't know if they still do that for the excise tax. So the seniors get it right when they go to the senior center. Instead of having to come in, they write their check or they pay in cash.
Yeah. Paying cash, they do do that.
Oh, they love it, they love checks.
Yeah.
But not all the seniors go to the senior center.
Nope.
So it's in there, a lot of them do get the newsletter.
Yeah.
And it's, there's definitely things in the newsletter to remind them, there's a reminder that.
And they will come in and like, you know, come in on the social days to go do that. And it really works out really well, it's something we can provide.
Yep, yep, so. Good stuff. All right, all right, so just let us know. And then last minute, I have a boring life, I can usually fill in. Okay.
Wait, so who's doing this bracket? Second Friday of the month.
Who's it?
You are.
No, it's not. That's fine, I'll do it.
All right, there you go, brother, nice.
Well, you gotta start the ball rolling. I lost, oh.
I know, I almost lost track of time.
Bring your nameplate.
Done.
Okay, um, I'd like to invite our, um, H R director, Lacey Marshall, to the table, please.
I like the nameplate.
Very nice, thank you, Tracy. Okay, so, um, last year we had conducted a wage and classification study. And Leah, you are our liaison from the select board.
Yes, I was.
On this. And, um, we did receive our report and it's in front of us this evening. So I guess how I see this tonight is that we're receiving it. Um, we're gonna discuss it and, um, I'm thinking that at some point, um, at a, at next meeting or the meeting after, that we invite the firm that actually conducted the survey or the feasibility to maybe come in for a meeting. Um, to maybe answer any questions that the board might have.
Okay.
And it was a pretty constant, comprehensive, um, document. So, Lacey, did you wanna? When did you start?
I came in at the very end of this. Um, so I kinda was just reading through the minutes and going back through emails. Um, so I don't know, you want Nita? Well, I know Leah, it was, yeah, so Lacey did come in, um, the last minute and, uh, not even last minute. Cause we had it, you were part of at least one or two meetings, I think, before, um, we sort of took the possession of the study. Um, so I think Todd was also included, the town accountant with us. And, um, the former town administrator, I think that's who it was, and the human resource director. But there was a time where we didn't have a human resource director. So, um, the work was still going on until Lacey joined us. There's a lot to think about in this. It's, in my opinion, so this is just my opinion, I don't really think there's anything earth shattering here. And, um, we did at one point discuss how they came to the comps. And I mean, you know, it's never comparing apples to apples, to use that expression. But, um, so down the road, I do have some concerns with some of the communities that we were compared to.
That's my concern as well.
Yeah, I mean, and in general, I know Lacey and I have spent a lot of time on this too. And, I mean, you have to start somewhere, I think we agree on that. Um, but it's really hard to compare yourself when your budget is less.
Six million?
Yeah, not fifty-six million, that's like twenty million dollars than we have at any given moment and.
Save among employees.
Right, and, yeah, save, right. And also, we, you know, we're compared, we're being compared to, I, I think at least half the communities have a split tax rate, which indicates that they have a much bigger commercial base. So that implies also more work that, you know, whatever people have to do. So it is definitely not, in my opinion, an orange, an, an orange to orange conversation. It's apples to oranges, so, um, that all being said, it does, you know, they did make some recommendations on the classifications. Um, and more of the nitty gritty, I think Lacey is a little more equipped to, you know, to, to talk about. Um, but I don't know that there's anything we can do about this, even if we wanted to right now. So I think we definitely look at it and put it in your trusty hands. And, you know, even if we have to wait until we have a permanent town administrator, because if we're gonna be reclassifying, I mean, it's all gonna, all the work is gonna fall on Lacey's lap. But I think, you know, working with a town administrator might be, this is a big project, so.
Right, and we just got new contracts.
Right.
So all of this would be.
Yeah, well, this is all non-union. And also, we should say that there was a couple of, not errors, but one position that was never included. So by the time they included it, we really don't have comparable data on it. So, um, that's where I'm at.
I don't, so basically, we had contracted M R I and I'll give you everything I kinda know. We contracted them and the board had, um, discussed that it would be all non-union.
Gov H R?
Gov H R.
Gov H R.
Sorry, Gov H R. Um, and it would be all non-union. And I think that the list from there went from, so we have sixty-six non-union employees. But the list went down to forty for some reason. And I think the board had discussed that. And it was based upon, you know, they had kinda taken out some of the seasonal, even though they're non-union, so they weren't included in the beginning. And then some of the part-timers, because they weren't considered falling under like the classification wage and scale policy. So those got brought back in. And then from there, the, uh, town administrator had chose twenty-nine positions as benchmark positions. And those are the ones in your appendixes that you'll see that were actually gone out to the towns to be surveyed based off of what their salary was compared to what our salary was. So the way they comped it was they did that fifteen-point factor where they went by population. Depending if they fell in the population, they got fifteen points. It depended on what the, um, what the, their, their budget was, which again, like they took between this and this. And if you landed between those, like, you got fifteen points. Some of them, I think, is a little bit outrageous where, you know, they kind of put their tick mark, but that's where they got to. So the things I like about the study is that, right now, the way that we're classifying ourselves is the D P W director is in pay grade K. And the library director is in L and the H R is in N. And so it doesn't group like department heads together. So if somebody steps into my position, and this is what happened with me, if you guys recall, I already had a set pay schedule that I had to start at, because that was what was voted for, for my predecessor. And because it was in the class and comp already and it was already signed by the personnel board, there was no way to go one way or the other. You couldn't lower it or raise it, you know, there was none of that. So the way that they've grouped it is that it's in steps. So like, grade one has a certain skillset in it, grade two, grade three, all the way to the top. So if you go with like grade ten, which is your, your department heads, it would be, yeah, I think it's in there. So it's like the D P W, um, it's the, maybe deputy fire chief. It has like four different ones, but it gives you a pay range then to say, hey, when you're hiring people, you should be hiring them between this salary to this. So when you reclassify your pay and wage scale, you can say, when you put it out there, we're gonna hire between this and this, instead of saying, oh, we're hiring at grade K, cause that's what they're coming out of. So it gives you that and it gives you that opportunity to kind of have a, have a wider range of, of what your pay is. Um, and that it also took into account, which is another thing that we're kind of bumping into issues where your, your lower grades are, their increases are more than your department heads increases. So now you're closing the gap of where that should be. So it kinda tells you.
A dollar.
What's that?
As a percent of their pay or as a dollar?
As both.
Okay.
Um, so in this, it shows that like in grade one, there should be a separation of like grade one from grade two of ten percent. And then in between grade two and grade three is like another ten percent. So it shows you how they should be graded, uh, which is another good piece in, in building that new, uh, class and like comp for the wages. Um, so that's kind of the gist of everything. And, and I do agree with Leah, I mean, some of, some of the things where they, where they did the comps, um, it didn't really translate over. So the position that they comped it to is not comparable to what our position is, cause we do have some very unique positions. Um, but it's a good start and it kinda gives us like a base to go off of.
Okay.
So that part was good. Uh, the one thing I do have to bring up is we, we did, there was a positions that were missed. So the select board in July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three had, um, signed a memorandum of agreement with the laborers, um, stating that they would perform a salary study for the following positions, which was the admin assistant, the assistant town clerk and assistant town, uh, treasurer collector, and then the executive assistant to the building commissioner. It says that they agree to perform a salary study. It doesn't say that it had to be in the class and comp study, but that, uh, because it had, hadn't been included or fell off of it, needs to also be done. Um, so that's just something to think about as well.
Is that in the packet?
No, no.
No, I, I just got it brought up to me.
If I may know?
Yes.
I agree that the, the thing that would concern me is to take this amount of detail and then it sits on a shelf and collects dust for the next few years.
Yep.
I mean, I agree that the comps could be better in some places, but I think it's still exposed a lot of areas where we've got room for improvement. And, you know, apples to apples, I mean, even just our department heads, I think it exposed a lot of areas for improvement. Especially when it's department heads to, you know, their employees under them as well. So I would love to see Lacey and, and Bob come back to us and say like, here's things we think the board should consider rectifying immediately, if there's anything. And here's our two, three, four, zero plan, which, you know, you've put a lot of thought into this anyways. But, I mean, I've, I personally thought our scales are just, they don't make sense at all.
Oh, no.
They don't.
Leah and I talked about this ad nauseam.
Yeah, years ago.
The union skills as well. I mean, a lot of the questions that we're asking the department heads every year is like, why do you have like nine percent increase on salary? Like, well, it's contractual, cause they did this and this, they ended up with like a huge number.
Yeah, and I know the backstory, still doesn't make it any better. And it was just one of those things where they classified everyone where they were and made that happen back twenty-five years ago.
So I'm, I'm happy to see this completed. There's a lot, lot of information here, which I thought was really good. Um, just what do we do with it?
So, and I did, I started building it for you, for your future. Thank you. So I went off of, um, I don't wanna misspeak, I wanna say it might have been Needham's website. And I really liked the way that they did it. So they had done it, so each position was built out. And then you had what their grade was and then their, their status, exempt, non-exempt. And they built it so that it was, um, like the non-represented, but in, in this one, it would be that grade ten. And instead of having, you know, the J K L, you put everybody that was in that department at grade into that grade ten. And then it's a salary range, right? Instead of having, again, like a set range per person, it would be a set range based off what grade you're in. So I did start building it out. Um, and again, I did look at that as well to say, hey, when we go back to, you know, bargaining, potentially, if you're starting and you're just getting hired, here's your pay scale. Based off of, we're already like in a pay scale, you know, let's look at having ten steps and doing it this way instead. So I've started to build it, um, and then I put like stipends in here. I will send it to you, it's at the very, very infancy. Um, but I kinda went off of what they had given us. And also like another website where I thought that they just had it designed like very well, so.
Do, do we have access or do we have ownership over the raw data used to, to put this report together?
So they did not send me, what the raw data was, is they had sent each employee a questionnaire.
Oh, no, I'm just thinking about the, the other towns they're comping from.
So the other times that they're comping from, from what I understood was, so Gov H R, I almost said it again. So Gov H R has done this so many times that they're really just pulling from.
Yeah, but, well, Hanson is like a year out of date or a year and a half out of date.
And that's why I'm saying, they are going by what they've pretty much already had on record, which.
Can change.
Yes, easily.
Right. Well, a- and that's, you know, and again, okay. You choose my words carefully. I think there was a time in many communities where the select boards were faced with trying to pay people as little as possible. But I think, at least in our case, that's changed. And I think that's changed overall, especially in Massachusetts, where, you know, if you, I mean, just look at salary stuff. So it, it's just impossible though, in some cases, to pay people money you don't have. So that kinda has to be, you know, go along with it. And, you know, um, coming to the median, when you're talking about more than half the communities having fifteen million dollar more budget than us, that's setting that median number a little higher. And again, it's, right, it's not perfect. And, and that's, you know, and I even asked that question in the second to last meeting. And, you know, the answer is you have to start somewhere and I, I understand that. But, and, and also, um, it, it's tough, like Lacey said, we have positions that aren't even, you know, close to what other people in other communities are doing. It's also eye-opening, but my suggestion is, this is a working meeting. And when we're ready to do this meeting, whether we, you know, and again, I don't know what happens when Bob leaves. So I don't know that we wanna ask another interim to work on this or what we're gonna do. But it's a lot of responsibility for just the human resource director, not having a town administrator to sort of.
Right.
You know, work on it together. So I'm not, and I'm not saying we put it on the shelf forever, but I'm definitely saying that, you know, cause there's other recommendations in here and I think it's, um, you know, there's other things that we do differently than other people, but there's still other people doing things the same way that we do. So it, it's not like we're doing one behavior that no one else is doing. It seems like H R really still is a mishmash in many communities. I mean, we only recently hired a human resource director in what, two thousand and eighteen? Some communities, human resources is still being done by the town administrator. So, you know, and again, we're compared to all these same people here. So you're right, that raw data is definitely, you know.
Do we all have a date in mind, like to Brian's point, to say, you know, do we wanna do it before the next annual town meeting to have this done? Do, I mean, we can't do it before this one, obviously. We, we just got the, we just got the data and we, we don't have the money. So we can't do it. And I'm not assuming we'll be in any better financial position for the fall, um, especially not knowing, you know, what we're coming in. Do we wanna have a date in the future?
If I may?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's, I would look to Lacey and Bob, at least while you're here, to tell us like, is there anything for a fall town meeting that makes sense? Once, once numbers shore up a little bit more, cause we've talked about revisiting a couple of things already in the budget. You know, is there anything that has to happen to right wrongs of the past? Or is this really more of a FY twenty-six discussion that we're having? So I, I don't wanna arbitrarily do something myself, I wouldn't say like, hey, if there's guidance from H R later in the year that I consider, I'd be well to do it.
And, you know, my other recommendation is, it is a lot to digest. I mean, I have, I've sat in four meetings and Lacey and I still talked about this for two hours just recently. and Lacy and I still talked about this for two hours just recently. So, you know, there's a lot to digest, so I don't think, I think we owe it to ourselves to each be very comfortable with it before we sit down to try to make decisions on changing the entire structure and, you know, um, so I I don't want us to put a meeting together just to sit down and ask questions and then have to have another. It's almost like each of us should schedule time with Lacy to go over, you know, your questions individually.
I just wanted to make sure that you at least received it.
Yes.
Had a chance to look at it. I've read it a couple of times, but, um, I think the next time that I go through it, I'll probably pick up on things that make more sense to me, so.
Yeah.
Yes, Brian?
I was just gonna say like hindsight always being, you know, preferable to have. The thing that, looking back now, is like, oh, I almost wish they could come back and told us like, of these towns, whether they're right or wrong, doesn't matter. I guess like, who who did they look at as like, these were preferred employers, I guess, right? Like, whose retention rates were good? Who had lots of employee turnover? What was it about their certain combination of benefits and such that seemed to attract people? Because there's almost very little loyalty these days. People will hop for the next nickel. So what could we do to?
So would you, you know, if you had your druthers, and I use druthers because I'm old now, um. Would you include how long they've been working for the town or how long they've been in position in the study? Because I mean, that also makes an impact on how high they are on the scale. Like, you're gonna have someone in for work in thirty years. They're obviously gonna be making more, um, you know, than someone that just started.
Well, we've also heard from the fire chief how they're now poaching people and giving them credit for the number of years they had. So it's only starting to get foggy.
Yeah. Well, cities have always poached from towns because of that's just, you know.
So a big piece of it was they excluded the longevity because they're looking at it as it's based off the position. So like, what do you, i- if you go on to like page six, it says the nine factors used for the evaluation of the positions are preparation and training, experience required, decision-making, responsibility for policy development, planning of work, contact with others, work of others being supervision, working conditions and use of technology. So they were basing it solely off.
I I I get the impetus, but at the same time, the total overall compensation is an important part of 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 any type of study.
And then they go into that as well in the back. So they talk about, that's where your vacation and your health insurance and some, it does, it did ask the towns, like, did they give longevity? So that's in there as well to see how we compared for the comps to other towns.
Yeah, but I I happen to have sat in on one of Gov HR's thing before and they're, they're not asking if people have longevity. They're asking if the current policy is to have longevity, so kind of two different metrics.
Well, I I did ask a question, I asked a question in a general nature and I said, well, what amount of you know, responsibility do you, does your contract say that to make recommendations? And I think she seemed a little, we're gonna give you the data, we may highlight somewhere where there's like a, you know, whatever, but we're not really gonna tell you what to do either, so, um, you know.
They gave us, I think, three decisions, which was a merit-based only plan, which is you you are basically going off of the performance evals and your top performers get, you know, a increase and then your bottom performers don't. And then it was a pure longevity. If you sit in the seat long enough, you just get the money. And then there was like a blended one where it blended longevity and merit together. Um, so they do give you the different methods, it's then, it's choices.
Both choices. Yeah, because longevity doesn't imply any type of good performance, but but merit is also the first thing to go if you're in a, in a squeeze where no one gets merit, you know?
Right. I mean, just off the top, I I like the third one, because there are people who, they become incumbents and they become useless, but they continue to get more money because they've been there so long. And then merit, you're putting the, you know, you're putting the power and the decision of the money raised in the person who's in charge, which creates an imbalance power dynamic. So by having, you know, a a combination where the longer you've been there, theoretically, the better you would be, the more you would know, that system seems the best. Because it, you know, the longer they're there, the more they'll know, and then the more money they have the opportunity to make, assuming they're doing their job good or or well and, you know, they're able to maybe save some.
But the 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 big, in our town, which is a small town, it's not like a city like Brockton or Bedford where there's ten people working in the tax collector's office, right? We are a small staff and you could very well be sitting next to a union person who's gonna absolutely get their whatever negotiated raise and then the person right next to them is like, well, I worked really hard and I technically am gonna get
Less.
Less. So that's what makes it difficult and even more of a unique situation for us, you know, so.
Does it ever?
We'll flush all this out too.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's what I'm saying. It's like, these exact questions, we, if if everyone, and and we shouldn't, you know, I've already taken up enough of Lacy's time with this.
Too late, you opened the door.
But but, you know, that's that's just what I'm saying. Like, when you sit down and actually, you know, plan an hour just to talk and ask your questions, it may lead to more questions. And then when we do get together, though, to discuss it, we should and be willing to make decisions, because we're, these decisions we're going to make, which, you know, is the burden of being uh, on the select board is going to affect, you know, people's jobs going forward and that's not something I think any of us take lightly, so.
Yeah, I'm sure to Lacy. It seems like, and I'm I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but it seems like you're an advocate for the grade system um, in in order for that to be like the first step, kind of, in.
I do. And and it's because, and I use myself for an example, because when I got hired, I think so the pay was already set at a certain price, um, based off of that grade, because I was grade J. And nobody else is in grade J. It's just the HR director is grade J. So it became kind of contentious based off of we, they, the board wasn't even given an opportunity to have any kind of scale. It was, this is grade J, this is what is the pay, this is what we're hiring at. Whereas the grades allow you to say, hey, you could be hired anywhere between here and here based off of your experience, your knowledge, your, you know, everything you have. So it gives the opportunity to hire somebody that has more experience at a higher level of pay or somebody with less experience at the lower level. You don't have to just set them, you pigeonhole is what you did. You put a position, you put a grade, and now you've pigeonholed yourself into having to hire them at that price.
Well, it'd be interesting to see what it what it looks like, so. But in the meantime, just, you know, maybe touch base with with Lacy, um, give her your thoughts and, um, we'll we'll work on, you know, the pulses to, you know, when we bring this back.
Um, I would just, through you, Madam Chair, ask our human resource director that, um, if, you know, a question comes from a couple of people, maybe you can give us the answer to all of us, you know, put them together when you're done talking to all of us and, you know. I I mean, I do want to call out, first of all, Lacy's done a tremendous amount of work on this, especially in the absence of you you know, not, no offense, Bob, but I know you only have twenty-five hours a week, so, um, I know that you can't, it's just impossible to, you know, to do everything, but also her human resource position as a director was compared to coordinator in some communities too, which isn't again, apples to apples. It's you you know, director is expected to have far more responsibility, so, um, you know, we, uh, we appreciate you as a director.
Thank you.
And you perform like a director, for sure.
Okay, so I want to just, um, before we move on to this, I'm mindful that we have, um, we have somebody here. And, um, so we can take this out of order, um, or we can get through the next few with the, um, HR director and then we'll be where you want to be. Okay, HR. So next, um, we had gone through the town administrator job description as a board and uh, made some recommendations. Excuse me?
I did have a point of clarification on this. This job description is tied to the act. So whatever we do for this job description has to be passed at town meeting to be valid.
I don't, I think we talked about that.
I didn't get to that point, so you chiming in.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say that we had taken the original job description that we had in place and I believe that was in line with the, um, town administrators act.
I think we had said, select board was changed through the act, in the act, so we changed this.
Right, that was one of the changes that we made, um, from selectmen to select board. Um, nothing was changed content-wise, except an addition was.
MCPPO.
Right, that certification was a requirement, um, that was added in there. This, it was in there at one point and then, and then for another hire, it was out. And now the board was like in there as a requirement.
Okay, so it's back to what it was prior to it, what it is.
When it was taken out.
Yes. It was what it was before it wasn't.
If I may, my my, I don't know what the word I want to use here. My challenge with this is it feels like we're mixing a job description with a job posting still.
Right.
Like, I don't know why the MCPPO is in the description part. Shouldn't it just be like, you're the chief procurement officer, here's what you do? And then the ideal candidate would be, you've got the MCPPO.
You know, having, and after your comment on that before, I revisited this.
Okay.
And yes, I felt the same way. Because the job description is about what it is that you're performing, the criteria, um, the content, um, not necessarily the qualifications. But.
So the only thing I would say to that, though, is your job description is what goes into your personnel file. So if you come back to me to say, hey, are they supposed to be doing this job? I always refer back to the job description, which is what's filed, because the advertisements aren't filed in your personnel folder.
It seems like a problem in and of itself.
They're filed in a separate cabinet, but.
So we have them.
We do have them, yes, absolutely.
Um, hours was changed also. Uh, regular working hours at town hall was also changed.
Yes, as was the IT, where it used to say computer technology, it was changed to IT, information technology.
Spelt it out. But I don't think there was any, not in the act.
There's no computers in the act.
No, um, in the act, it was the, uh, it was responsibility of the TA to be the IT director. How do you like that?
Because under the general administration, um, it does reference the fact that, um, the administrator and coordinator, the day-to-day activities of town departments and employees in accordance with the job description and an act providing for, um, town administrator and the town's lakeville. So it does refer to the fact that this, there is an act.
So, I mean, the solution could be as simple as we bring this to town meeting, vote on it and codify it. Once it goes to town meeting, it's, you know.
Some of our.
It's in effect active, once it goes to town meeting, even though it needs to be approved.
Yeah, but some of our stuff, it also says the select board can make modification.
Yeah, that's what I read.
Yeah, so I'm trying to find.
Is that the very bottom of it?
Okay, here we go. Right above section four, the town made by bylaw from time to time, modify, delete and amend responsibilities and duties as necessary or appropriate, consistent with this act. So just just a bylaw then.
Duties. Duties.
That was in there, yep. Delete and amend the responsibilities and duties as necessary or appropriate, consistent with this.
So that would have to be through bylaw, but I don't know that, um, duties are, have been changed here. Responsibilities or duties.
I think any change to the language would imply one or the other. Except for what's already been changed.
Well, in the, um, consideration of time, if the other one wasn't so bad, we just use the old one, because I don't think we have time to wait.
No, this was supposed to go out tomorrow.
So.
Can we make a really ridiculous vote?
Depends on what that is.
I love a nice ridiculous vote. Um, pending, pending conversation with town council. Um, we will approve this. If not, we will stick with the old one, like.
But which old one?
Oh, the one from nineteen nineteen.
Nineteen, you're not that old.
Twenty, I really am, twenty nineteen.
Which was the one that we originally had before we changed this one?
Yeah, I think twenty nineteen was before that.
No, twenty twenty-one it was changed, yeah, to remove.
Or was there ever a bylaw change?
No, no.
Why did they remove MCPPO?
That was a.
Um, I don't know, which is good.
Yeah.
It was me, Brian and Rich, because they, we have Tracy who's. It still says the town administrator is the chief procurement officer, but we took out that they have to be MCPPO.
But now we're putting it back in.
Yeah.
Okay, so this needs to be sent to town council tomorrow to review it along with the act to say if it's
materially different enough to need a bylaw amendment.
All right, thank you. I just had to know what I'm asking.
Yes. You do have your meeting on May thirteenth, if it can't wait till your next meeting on the twentieth, but I right, I don't think.
So I think they're looking.
No, but we can sever this and have the job descriptions still go out as is. I don't know that the job description is, to your point, I know it goes in the file and all that, but the job description is, I think, severable from the posting, to have the posting go out.
But the posting goes out with the job description?
It does, but it's a posting.
It's a posting.
What is the definition of is?
It's like we did have an amendment in twenty twenty-one, but I can't tell what it is yet. It's in the codification.
No, it's, is that the overall?
Could be, that's why I say I can't tell you what the change is.
So we have job description, now we have the posting in here as well.
So it was regular work hours that was changed.
Yep.
MCPPO and IT.
Yeah.
So, okay, the things that were changed were MCPPO.
Yep.
IT went from computer to IT.
Yep.
Bachelors or masters and we added public administration or related field to municipal management.
Yep.
And then it said a minimum of one to three years, we changed it three to five years. Those are the changes.
So that was, that would be the one that you would ask if it is materially, you know, dissimilar to to necessitate a a bylaw change.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, we'll just fly with the old one, right?
The one from, the old one doesn't have the MCPPO though.
No, it just not.
But the MCPPO is in our advertisement and our profile.
Right.
So that would be a conversation with MRI to say, hey, we had to take it out of the job description based on bylaws, but this is definitely something, because it isn't our ideal candidate. It's on there.
Yeah.
So they will see that on there.
Well, I I I guess I have things in my job descriptions, like for for postings that are more specifically gauged to bring in the candidate in, and then things that I'm holding them for. They're not, they're similar, but not, they're not carbon copy. Um, they are different, so if we add a job posting, as long as it wasn't significantly different, I think the posting could stand, but that's not my legal opinion.
So follow up with with counsel on that tomorrow. All right, so do we want to, um, entertain a motion to? All right, so do we want to entertain a motion to? How did you put it? So approve the job description based on town council's approval? Of the content of.
Noted changes. And then if, if not, we can go with the old job description, so prior to nineteen, twenty nineteen.
All right, you got that, Tracy?
Sorry, Tracy.
To approve the revised town administrative job description contingent upon town council's approval with noted changes and if not acceptable to town council, we can go with the twenty nineteen town administrative job description.
Is that okay for everyone?
I'm so lost at this point between the act and the bylaws. I mean, we have a, so chapter fifty-three dash seven is our town administrative description in the local bylaws. But I can't tell if there's been a modification from the special act or if this is just a copy of it. I'm not gonna be able to figure that out in the next couple of minutes.
So what, town council?
Yep, that's what they're there for.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, you said this was supposed to go out tomorrow or has to go out tomorrow?
It doesn't have to, based off of the timeline and our interim turning into a pumpkin at some point.
When does that, when does midnight hit?
July.
July.
Okay.
But I'm open to amending.
Right. So, we were looking at it going out May six, sorry, May seventh, closing on June sixth. And then the timeline that we have right now has the new town administrator in place by late September, early October. So every time we push.
That extends. So then what is the difference between, just, just because I'm not super comfortable voting on something I don't understand. So what is the difference between the twenty nineteen, is that it, and this one? Like, if this one doesn't go through, what's the difference in the twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen is a representation of what was the act of nineteen eighty-nine that created the town administrator position.
What does that mean?
It, it, it's the same, so it matches.
So the MCPPO and everything is in there or whatever it is?
Everything that, everything that was set up in nineteen eighty-nine was on the nineteen, damn it, twenty nineteen version of the job description.
There's no MCPPO in the nineteen ninety?
No, there wasn't.
Okay, thank you.
There was no MCPPO?
No, just that it was the procurement officer.
Procurement officer?
Yes. So.
Okay, thank you.
Lacey, you okay? I appreciate you. Make the call in the morning.
Are these also need to be?
We have to vote on those.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
We have to vote on those. We'll hold those independent, so we're gonna finish this phone, any further discussion? Okay.
I'm just concerned if the MCPPO isn't in the job description and then it comes time to go to a contract and we say, well, it's gonna be in your contract. The certification.
So is the solution just to put it at town meeting and add it into town meeting?
I just think I wanna hear what the lawyers say.
Can we just table this until the thirteenth?
She needs to find out.
Yeah, we're delaying.
Well, yeah, she would find out and then we would decide on the thirteenth.
We can do that on the thirteenth, yeah.
Okay.
Because I think we're just gonna see her going back and forth with worries.
It's gonna be just us in here, that's our goal setting.
Oh, I'm there anyway.
You're there anyways, so we can designate maybe fifteen, twenty minute conversation.
Okay.
Two, three hours. I don't wanna go any more than two hours that night, so. So do you want to rescind the motion at this point?
Rescind the motion.
Okay. So, Lacey, you'll still go to town, check with town council and we'll just hold off on the next few items until, and we'll bring it back to the thirteenth.
Do we need to hold off on the next few?
Well, salary we don't, but the posting and the community profile.
Well, I mean, the posting is just the posting.
I think the posting's the posting, I, we, I, I agree, it, it's.
Right, it's not tied to anything, it's just what we're looking for.
There's no legality to it.
All right, so then let's go to thirteen, discuss a possible vote on town administrator salary. So according to the community profile, I was trying to get, put these in order so that it wasn't gonna be choppy.
I'm so glad I ruined that for you.
It's okay, but the salary range of one forty-five to one sixty-five is listed in the profile.
Okay. So. Again, in this class and comp study, the range that they gave us is one thirty-three to one sixty-three and some change. Right, so.
I think we should do one thirty-five to one fifty-five.
Didn't the one forty-five to one sixty-five come from the subcommittee?
It did, it's a recommendation.
Did they see this?
They hadn't seen this.
So then we should go with this.
Right, but the subcommittee is just a recommendation, it's not funding.
Right.
We can overrule them.
So if we do one thirty-five to one fifty-five or one fifty, we go with the lowest in this, but we're not reaching the maximum of the recommended.
Madam Chair, if I may, ad freshly, just looking through MC, you know, the website, the MMA website. One forty-five looks like a low point for new hires. I don't see a lot of, the last time I saw anything were in the, in the one twenties, it was like Marion or Matta Poisett, like a couple of years ago, which is smaller, like seven thousand people, so I would probably say one forty-five to one sixty, but I wouldn't, the one thirty-five seems like very out of threshold.
There's nothing that, the ceiling, the ceiling, there's nothing saying you have to pay that.
Right, right.
The only issue I have with it is that they're gonna come in expecting that we have money. And I wanna set the, the tone right away that we're struggling and that if they're coming here expecting, you know, the higher range, this is not the place for that.
Well, that's already in the budget today, is it not?
One sixty-five is in the budget.
Because that was existing salary, so we have, we have it in the budget, if we, if we find the right candidate.
Right. And don't you not think that they're not already watching anybody that?
Good, listen.
They're already watching.
But that's the point, it's just because it's there, doesn't mean we have to spend it. I just, I don't know. I wanna, I wanna set the tone.
I absolutely agree with that statement.
Yeah, I do too.
I'm concerned that, from talking to MRI, the pool that is out there right now, we've got communities not far from us that posted a higher ceiling and still didn't get anybody.
Yeah.
So, that's concerning.
Madam Chair, Rochester just lost their TA, who went to Carver, he just resigned at their last meeting, their last town meeting.
Carver.
So that's competition for us right there.
Carver was like twenty-eight or something.
Yeah, well, Carver's had a new select, a new TA every year for the last five years.
No, no joking, like, I'm not, this is not, yeah, this is not hyperbole.
And they have a higher budget and.
Right.
It was not one of my quips at all.
All right, so keeping back to Lakeville, let's bring, tie this back. So we have a subcommittee that had made a recommendation of one forty-five to one sixty-five. We have one sixty-five in the budget right now as a, as a max, I guess you could say. And then Brenna just suggested one thirty-five to one fifty-five. We have to put a salary range out there, so.
I, I'll make a motion.
Make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that it stays one forty-five to one sixty-five with the, with the idea that we don't wanna spend to the very top, obviously, but.
Right.
One forty-five to one sixty-five in order to cover all our bases and to have a high and a low margin that is reasonable.
Right.
But the vote is one forty-five to one sixty-five.
Because most people come in, if they're thinking that they're just gonna be at the top of the range and then additional benefits after that, I think we're, we have to make.
So. Are we still gonna offer deferred comp and all that other stuff?
That's what they come in and, oh, I motion on the floor, I don't know if you have to second it for a discussion.
We do.
Second.
All right, discussion.
So they'll come in and ask for anything, anyone, any experienced town administrator will come in and ask for anything. It all depends, you know, who's doing negotiating, what they have the power to negotiate and all that, but I know that's a popular one right, going on right now. And a lot of, a lot of boards like it because it's, it kicks the can down the road a little bit for the deferred comp question. So they'll hire them in at a lower yearly salary, but they'll give them the deferred comp as kind of a, you know, as a way to get them in the door and give them some incentive.
But it's an excellent point, though. Yeah, just putting it out there.
Yep.
Just putting it out there, folks.
All right, any further discussion?
I don't think it's smart. We do too much when it comes to money in terms of trying to get people in and trying to entice people and all of this stuff. We've got a lot of capital projects coming up. Once those projects are in, once people aren't leaving as much, are those benefits going away? Are we reducing the amount that we gave them for their incentives? We're taking money and we're blowing it to get people to come here and it, it's just, it's, it's, I don't know, it's not smart to me because we have the money, but adding a lower amount gives us a little bit of cushion over the next couple of years, it gives us a little bit of cushion for their benefits. It doesn't strap us to the highest amount, it doesn't push us to the limit and then say, okay, here's your benefits on top of that. Because if they're getting a cost of living raise next year and they're already near the top of this, it's just going up. It's just not smart to me to go right to the very beginning, when you're negotiating, you wanna leave room for you to start low. So it's just, I, I can't vote yes on this because it's not smart to me.
I agree with you, Brenna, because I've now seen this happen play out a couple of times and that's why I made sure to, that, you know, our chair put it back on again. I'm not comfortable with the one sixty-five either, I think it should be lower.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, both of you, vote by roll, please.
Fabian nay.
Donahue nay.
Carboni nay. Doesn't pass, candido, aye.
Aye, aye.
All right, and I'm, I'm going, I'm just saying that I think that even lowering that down to one sixty, one fifty, well, one fifty-five. One sixty is where I'm more comfortable. So I do the one forty-five to one sixty.
My challenge here is we, we selected a group of subcommittee members and have a hired contractor, we now have essentially said that we don't trust their recommendation.
That's not true, because they hadn't seen the study.
Was MRI in the room?
Uh, they were in the room, yeah.
And they're the ones that are helping towns hire right now.
Yep, but those folks that were on the thing hadn't seen the study and I'm basing a lot of this on the study.
But we just said the studies get comps that don't matter, so.
Right, and the comps that, they, that's the reason why I don't like it, because the comps they used are communities that have way more money to pay than we do. They have more commercial property that has to be overseen by a town administrator, they have way more of everything, so.
If I may make a point, they also have a lot more staff and so they, the town administrator tends to do more delegating than actual, hands-on, so.
So my, I have to say that, you know, you might be questioning why, I mean, I obviously support recommend, the recommendation, but I'm, I'm very cautious right now that with benefits and what you had mentioned.
And deferred compensation.
Can put that over the one sixty-five. So I'm trying to make sure that there's some room there.
It only happens if it gets negotiated over that.
Well, that's true, but you know it's coming.
Well, that's, that's up for us to discuss during contract negotiations.
And this would all be, what's the word, commensurate on experience, so the ceiling doesn't mean they're getting it, it's just this is the range. You attract a certain range of talent, you might not even attract the talent you want if they see a much lower ceiling.
All right, I'm going to change my, my vote, I'm gonna say yea on this.
You can't change your vote.
I can.
You gotta redo the motion.
How can you change your vote, it was a vote.
I don't know, I think you can change your vote.
You can re-look at the vote if you were on the prevailing side.
Prevailing side.
So we, so you were on the prevailing side, so we could take another vote?
Okay, so we'll take another vote, so the motion on the table would be the range of one forty-five to one sixty-five. Fabian nay.
Donahue nay?
I'm gonna say aye on this time, because I, aye.
Candido, aye.
Aye, aye.
Not easy.
Okay, do we wanna do the posting or?
Yes, please. So we have a job posting in front of us, it's a revised town administrative job posting. And in here, highlighted were the changes that came out of our previous meeting. Public administration was changed, I forgot what it was.
It just said.
Municipal.
It just said municipal management or related.
Right, right. And then filled with three to five years of experience. And then must be MPPO certified, Massachusetts certified public purchasing official, to spell that out. Or be able to obtain the certification with eighteen months of the hire date. So, those are what the changes were on the job posting.
Are we officially at twelve thousand or is that just a rough, because I thought I saw eleven-five in the.
I don't think we're at twelve yet.
Somewhere else.
I thought we were.
Or is it the profile, no, profile says twelve thousand two.
Okay, so.
All right.
It's just.
Here we go. When I looked at, I was looking through the cherry sheets and all that and it says that we are at eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-two.
Okay.
Okay, but if we go true to number by what the town clerk is.
She said it's twelve thousand.
She, it is twelve thousand three hundred and thirteen or something like that, so that's why.
Well, because not everyone's a registered voter.
Right, so it's an estimated population, but I think we're probably gonna go to twelve thousand instead of back down.
Sort of asking, because I think that was tied to the veterans officer.
Yeah, see, that's where I'm trying to, I, I'm, I'm just trying to see which way we're gonna be able to go on that one as well.
Would you mind changing it to approximately?
I was just curious.
Do you want me to put Lakeville mask is approximately or?
Approximately will be fine.
Okay.
Because it's give or take.
It's exactly twelve thousand, one comes in, one has to leave.
Right. There's no, there's no room for.
It's my turn.
Population change. Okay, do I have a motion to? Motion. Accept the job description.
As written.
As written with.
With the amendment of approximately to the population of twelve thousand.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none?
Call please.
Fabian aye.
Donahue nay.
Carboni aye.
Candido aye.
Aye, aye.
And then with the community profile, which tells a little picture about us, if you can just add the approximate at the top of that too.
Yeah, it says it's throughout, so I'll change it.
But everything that was in the job posting is in here.
This document says that we're fiscally stable, do they know that we're walking, what they're walking into?
Well, I mean, we're technically fiscally stable.
We have, we have a double A rating still.
Sounds ready, I'd have to check.
Yeah, I know, I think our borrowing rating is still good, because we pay all our bills on time, all our loans and everything.
We got a good credit score, basically.
We have money in savings.
Yes, we pay our OPEB higher than.
We pay our retirement.
Yep. Our benefits.
And we put money every year into our stabilization.
Yep, so if we do run into a scenario where we cannot find a way to use the appropriate amount of money to fill, we do have mechanisms to close that gap, so those are all the qualifications needed to save.
The gap's getting tighter and tighter.
It really is, yes.
However, if there is building, that changes that again, both to negative and a positive.
Quick question on page two, the next one, was all this stuff in red additions since the last time we looked at it or?
Yeah, so MRI, after they had conducted all of the surveys, that is what they updated, so everything from the last one remained. The red is just the additions.
Okay, I don't have red.
It's like a, well, people.
Okay, so the, the ones that changed are the MCPPO or, yep.
Yep.
And then if you go down where it says possesses an understanding of mass general laws, regulations.
Statute of.
It then says and must understand the responsibilities in the general town code, section fifty-three dash seven, which is the town administrator act. It then says and must understand the responsibilities in the general town code section fifty-three dash seven, which is the Town Administrator Act.
Okay.
Um, the next one down, be a problem solver where it stops at officials in the addition is must have the passion, energy and professional commitment to provide stability and consistency to the community.
Okay. A motion. Please accept uh, to accept and approve the revise, revised community profile.
Second.
Motion and a second. Um, any discussion? Okay, hearing none? Um, roll call, please.
Fabian aye.
Donahue abstain.
Um, Carboni aye.
Candido aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay. All right, Lacy, that should be enough to get you um, started at eight a.m. Tomorrow morning.
All right.
But thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda, I'd like to invite um, our Parks Commission Chair, Michael Smith, to the table.
By the way, I'm willing to forfeit my Parks Commission salary.
You're so generous.
I'm a team player. Team player here.
Okay, so before us this evening, uh, just a little history on this. Um, there's a, a request um, to vote on whether or not Clear Pond Park will be open to Lakeville residents only. Um, for this, this summer, so two cycles ago, I would say, two summers ago, um, there was a, I guess a contribution or so say, or, I don't know how I would say.
I'll chime in if you.
There was what, seventeen-five?
Seventeen thousand five hundred subsidy.
Yeah.
Right after COVID when it was closed.
Right.
Because just a break before, it was open to towns. And then it caused a lot of problems, so the town said, you know, I'm not quite sure if it was um, voted on, if slept for.
It was voted.
So it was voted on to give us seventeen-five, but just allow Lakeville residents to come in.
And then last year we opened and um, again, it was Lakeville residents. Um, and so now the Parks Commission is asking us to um, reconsider. Um, and the seventeen-five is, I know, still um, in the budget. To open up and include our sister communities of Middleborough and Freetown.
Did everybody get this?
Yes.
Yep.
And in front of you um, this evening, now did the parks, I know you met the other day, um, you had a meeting, did you vote?
We, we, we voted, so this is what we did. We, we voted the resident rate. And then we voted the non-resident rate contingent upon you approving it. So, um, what you see here, first let me give you some background on what we did the last year. We had about a hundred and twenty season passes. So our season passes, which was all Lakeville residents, was around twelve thousand dollars. Concessions stand brought in five, swim lessons a thousand, gate fees, which are guests brought in around eight thousand. Um, so what's, what's happening is, is that uh, even whether you're seventeen-five, we're still losing around seventeen-five. And I'm part of the issue or most of the issue is that um, the uh, park can handle more, okay? More revenue as far as people go. Um, we do get comments from, or emails from people from the, the Middleborough, hey, you know, how come we can't, whatever, and we, we tell them right now, it's not allowable. Uh, the issue is, is that we think, I mean, we could cap it at like fifty people, but at two hundred dollars a per, a, a family, that's an extra ten thousand, not including SNAP R and not including guest fees. So I think that would really help with the delta that we're, that, that we're missing here. Um, it's to me, it's not an expense thing because we're open ten weeks. About ten weeks, two and a half months. Um, we budget to be open every day, okay? Because we have to, we're open seven days a week. Um, we don't put any rain dates in because we don't know when it's going to rain. So if it does rain, we save on labor, but we lose on concession and we lose on guest fees. So, we don't, I mean, like I said, save a little bit of expenses, but we lose on revenue. So there's really nothing to gain by rain dates. The staff, by the way, we can't really cut this down because we have state requirements for lifeguards. Uh, we have snack attendants, we have gate people. Uh, I reminded that these, these kids also mow and rake and weed whack and paint, so, you know, take care of the beach and supply, so it's not like they're sitting around. So Doug Barry does an excellent, excellent job. But uh, I think this is the time, I mean, it's, I, I think it's the time to maybe do a um, a pilot program for one year and come back to see how it works. To see, you know, how it worked, how did, how did it help as revenue wise, how did it help in attendance wise? And, you know, we, it's just a lot of pressure, as, as you know, about money. And we want to put it this way, if, if we didn't get your seventeen-five and couldn't open up, that park wouldn't open. It just wouldn't open, nor do we want to cut down the dates because it's only two and a half months. People who go there really enjoy it. Uh, Doug has put a lot of activities there. So I, I'm coming to you as um, we did vote on um, allowing a season pass for, for Middleborough and Freetown. You can see the difference, it's an extra ninety dollars. Uh, we didn't raise Lakeville season pass because we had raised it uh, the year before. Uh, remember, these passes are just for family that lives in the household. So if anyone else comes, we actually check the licenses, I mean, we, we do what we have to do. But I, I think talking to Doug is that we can afford to let in more people. Like I said, we could cap it the first year, only fifty people. On top of that fifty, obviously we'll get more guest passes, but, you know, we, we can't continue to lose seventeen-five every year because then that's money in the enterprise fund that we're going to have to take out from another, whether it's loon pond or something to balance. So we're, we're actually, when we open the doors to um, Clear Pond, we're seventeen-five in the hole. That's pretty much the way I look at it.
Okay.
And that's even with a full season.
Anybody on the board have any questions for, for Mike?
I have a couple of questions and comments. Um, I had occasion to talk to Doug Barry a couple of months ago. Um, we had this very conversation about um, you know, he's seeing it struggle and he's seeing, you know, not getting use out of it. We obviously want to get the highest and best use out of our, our parks and be able to protect our resources as well. Um, as you know, it was, it was closed by the select board for a reason. Um, it was abuses of um, the facilities and all that, so, you know, assurances on making sure there's enough people staffed that the, the facilities aren't getting abused. But partnering with our neighbors um, and partnering formally with our neighbors would probably be a savvy approach. Um, I, I would love to get an intermunicipal agreement with both Middleborough and Freetown. Um, and see if we can also ask ourselves to avail some of their amenities as well. I would like this to be just more than letting people in. I would like the residents of Lakeville to be able to reap some benefits from this. And well, has there any been, been any discussion?
Not, not on my end, not on our end. But uh, there is a lot of resources that we all do and we can set up some reciprocal program with them. Um, I think that could be down the road when we're looking at reorganizing it.
Yep.
But um, but I'm glad you said that about what Doug said about usage. It's a great facility, it really is. It's just not used enough. And whether people go to the beach, whether they, you know, for whatever reason, I think we should try the pilot program, just see how it goes. If it's too much, then we make a change, but, but I don't think so. I really don't.
And my other question was, why were we thinking of limiting it to fifty?
No, I'm, what, what I'm saying is, if it works out and if, if it works out at a certain number, but it's too much for another, we should think about capping it. I, I would, I think it's, in any kind of pilot program, I think you, you need to put a cap on it. That's just me, whether it's a hundred or whatever, in case in case it gets crazy down there. We may get uh, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty people in, and then what do we say to them? No, we're, we'll fall. So, I mean, that's entirely up to you. I mean, we can cap it at a hundred.
But I think that that would be up to the director and the Parks Commission.
Yeah, we can cap it.
While they're there, I mean, obviously safety's first, right?
Right.
At most, but, I mean, if, if things start to feel, I don't, I'll just use the word uncomfortable and, you know, you've got to put up the overwhelming.
Yeah.
Where.
Well, I think we would have to limit guests because we sell the passes before it's open.
Yeah.
So we're not going to know.
Oh, I see, yeah.
We're not going to know, but we could say, all right, this is kind of full, we're going to limit guests, no guests for the.
So it would be unlimited passes, limited guests because?
Well, for now, that's probably what I would do, but if we see it's getting nuts, we would just tell the out of town people that, you know, we're, we're uh, we're uh, cutting off the guests for you. Which doesn't, they're, they're not going to lose anything on it, nor is it going to cost them any different. But, you know, it'll be the first time we've done it in years, so it's going to be um.
The only thing I have with that is that it's hard to make you like an intermunicipal agreement, which I think is a great idea to be clear, but I think it would be hard to put any weight in it if you're prioritizing Lakeville residents over other residents. So I like the capping idea because when you're doing conventions, concerts, anything like that, they usually release tickets or whatever in batches to see what it is. So maybe start with seventy-five passes for each town and just leave Lakeville open and see how that goes.
But we didn't, I just let you know, we didn't vote on a cap. This is just a discussion.
No, I understand. Uh, just a suggestion, like.
Right, no.
Almost release the, the other town in batches, like start with fifty or seventy-five and see if they sell out, because they might not sell out, people might not know yet. Um, the other thing I would suggest is having a comment box at either the front desk um, or the commissary and get a free ice cream, whatever, just something so that people who go can write down, you know, we'd like to see this, we'd like to see that. Because what that does, if we do do that intermunicipal agreement, is it allows us to go to Middleborough and Freetown and say, we want to fix this, we need help. You can come here, your residents left, you know, this feedback, so it, it allows us a little more room to actually create a network.
Right.
Um, as opposed to being.
Surveys are always good.
Yes.
I mean, Freetown uses our fields. We have Lakeville-Freetown baseball. You'll see there, it's probably two-thirds Freetown people there, so, and we also use their fields. So, yeah, I think if you do approve it, we'll keep a close eye on it.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe we don't sign much, but if we do, then we'll talk to Doug about that and then see how it works out, but I just think it's, it's worth a shot for us and maybe in the future, we don't need town's money.
Right.
Great.
Okay, so we can entertain a motion and more discussion, Brian?
We do discussion.
We're trying to keep the discussion with the, the motion, but did you have something outside of?
Well, maybe just some questions, I guess. I mean, I, I'm happy to see more people utilize it for sure. I'm not going to lie, I love the fact that it's pretty quiet on a nice day, but I think there's definitely room to share. Um, I did have a question, though, like, so there's an eighty-two percent increase for a resident season pass to a non-resident season pass, but only a twenty-five percent increase for a resident adult to a non-resident adult. I'm just curious if that's going to force more people to go with the day passes instead of a season pass. But people that maybe buy the two hundred dollar season pass for the town are the ones that like really want to go and will utilize it.
A hundred percent. They're, they're three or four days a week, so it makes more sense to do that.
More invested.
And then my thought was, maybe the, maybe the gate doesn't have it, but like, out of the hundred or so passes you sold last year, I think you said a hundred and something.
We took in twelve thousand, so it's a hundred and twenty.
All right. Does the gate keep track of roughly like how many passes come in a day? Just to say like on a given day, maybe here's the extra capacity we do have?
Yes, we do. Um, I guess from what I'm hearing is that uh, our bookkeeping is going to change, so it's going to be a lot more.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, from everything, it, it's going to be more accountable down there and I'm sure this is going to be a huge part of it. You know, we, we do ask for driver's licenses because, you know, uh, people could take advantage of it. If, oh, well, I'm, I live there, what can I see a license? And, you know, you hate to do it, but it's a business.
Right.
But exactly what you're saying is, uh, I think Bob, I think you, I don't know who I talked about, or someone mentioned to us that it's going to be a lot stricter as far as.
I'll mention that after, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Um, the season passes, maybe it might be beneficial to put in here per person, you know.
Well, per family.
Per family.
Per family, then put that in there.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that it's per family.
Is there a limit on like number of kids? Like, how do you know if they have three kids or three kids and three friends? I mean, kids don't have licenses, like, is it just kind of a, the gate? Makes a judgment call and, oh, you have twelve kids, come on in.
Well, one, it's a, we hope they're honest, but two, we get to know them. The gates, guy, oh, we know you, we know you only have three kids, and it's a small town, but it's not perfect. It really isn't, and if they're smaller kids, I think, but they're free anyway, two and under, three to fifteen, so. It's not perfect and hopefully maybe we can tighten it up and work that out.
That's a suggestion. Um, if you want to tighten it up, um, you just make them put all the names on the season pass when, when they go for the pass, you.
That's hard.
It is?
Well, then you're requiring kids to show ID, or you're requiring to show identification.
You're getting a count, you're not, yeah.
Right, but you also have to say, this is Ian, and then Ian could change what he looks like because the sister wants to bring her friend instead of the brother, do you know what I mean?
I, I don't think it's a big enough problem right now that we have to worry about that.
Just glad the kids are out of the house. Who cares about kids?
Like, our family has memberships at the aquarium and Buttonwood Park and whatnot, and it's basically like, you know, the adult, it gets like two plus two or two plus four, whatever it might be, and it's like, okay, if I go, I have to show my ID to prove I'm the actual cardholder, then they just go, uh, how many you got? Three? Yep, you're good. They don't care if they're adults or kids or anything, it's just come on through the gate.
And what do you do if your aunt and uncle bring your kids? They're not really a part of the house, so leave it. So it's, it's a fine line, it really is.
I mean, Lakeville with a beautiful Clear Pond Park and.
I trust you.
Yep.
The only other comment that I'm sure I was going to make is if the parks do decide to have like a, a cap of some, of a day, where it's like, oh, it's getting crazy. We have to find a really good way of communicating that because there's nothing worse than getting all the kids together in the car and then driving there and being like, gates closed, like, you can't come in.
Yeah.
That would just be a.
Yeah.
Big customer.
Yeah, I'm, you're right. I mean, hopefully you run into that.
I hope not.
I mean, hopefully run into, then we got to say, I'm sorry, then, you know.
What's the occupancy? I remember, I used to know, but.
I don't know, but it's really not a fire occupancy.
Right after breakfast, get in there.
I mean, lifeguard to.
Oh, yeah, no.
Towel down.
Yeah, but I think Doug schedules as, as to our maximum that way, so.
That's a good point.
Yep.
Okay. So anybody want to uh, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. Um, I'll make a motion to open Clear Pond Park to Middleborough and Freetown as directed by the Parks Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Fabian aye.
Donahue aye.
Carboni aye.
Candido aye.
Aye, aye.
Is, is it too late for Lake Kim to blur my face and change my voice because I know I'm going to get a call from somebody? And you know who that person is.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may.
Yes.
Um, on this subject of collecting fees where the chairman of the Park Commission is here. Member Candido and I had a conversation last week about cash handling through uptown government.
Oh, yes.
And obviously parks is a big part of that. I reached out to the treasurer, collector have had several conversations with her. In fact, this morning I had a conversation with her about parks, about maybe changing some of the policies, um, not necessarily changing the policies, but when someone comes in to the parks and pay cash, that they'd be given a receipt with a number on it. So, I don't know if you've had that conversation with her.
Not officially, these are just, yeah, not officially, I'll have, um, I'll go there with Melissa because Melissa's handling Clear Pond.
That's good, good.
So, um, but no, it's, you don't want it to lose, especially even with inventory of food.
Exactly.
Giving away cup of bars, I mean, it really has to be tight.
And I think the town received a finding from the audit firm uh, in that regard, so uh, as, as long as you know about it, you know, feel free to reach out to the treasurer collector the next couple of weeks.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, hopefully there's some forms or maybe there's.
Yeah, the pad or something with number, it has to be numbered, each person coming in, so. It's going to require some work on the parks.
Yeah.
I know she talked to the clerk in the department about it, so you may want to reach out to him and continue that discussion. I know she talked to the clerk in the department about it, so you may wanna reach out to him and continue that discussion.
Okay.
Quick question, if I may, while all chairs here, I don't remember last year, do they take credit card at the gate now, or is that only?
There's no credit card available because there's no wireless there.
So.
You can pay, you can pay your membership pass. Online here, but you, there's nothing, there's no wireless capabilities there.
Alright.
That is an upgrade that I have suggested, and I was hoping we could have some funds in an old IT bill to pay for it.
Cause any reduction in cash is.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to the treasurer.
Madam Chair, so we had looked into, um, it was the interim treasurer back then. Working with the bank, one of our banks, to do all that, so there is some information in there on. But we didn't, never got the. The technology to be able to do it, but we definitely looked into it for. So there is some information there.
We don't even need Wi-Fi, just a five G connected device will do it. We got power, we can make it happen.
Yeah, but I think, um, we were, had to use one of our already existing banks or something like that, so there's. A whole bunch of information already there.
Those banks.
Well, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for a sunny season.
Yes.
Okay, um, before us this evening, there's a request from the planning board to review the revised site plan for two and for Bedford Street. And this is where the old, um, A-frame was located, um, just for purposes of location. Um, they're requesting that the board, um, forward any comments that they may have. So did everybody get a chance to take a look at this?
I'm not sure, unless I missed it, I didn't know what was revised, so.
I didn't, I, am I there with you? I wasn't sure. What was that? What was revised?
Oh, okay.
Same as last time, I guess.
So it's, uh, here.
Yeah. Glad you took it for me.
There was a spelling error, um, here. But this was, you know, originally it was December fifth, twenty twenty-three, and then the revised on March thirteenth, twenty-four, so. Um, usually there's a little key that'll tell you what the revised was, but I. Didn't see it, but. Um, Tracy, what were our last comments? Do you remember? It just had to do with water, I think, but.
Yes, um, whether they were requiring water because it's a state road, so we really can't comment on the road cuts, but the last. When they changed, they changed the location of the current driveway on the last plan.
Okay.
Um, that was one of their changes back then.
General comment, Madam Chair, be helpful if the planning department can just tell us, here's what changed.
Yeah.
This last time, or.
Okay, that would be.
There's my comment.
Yeah, there's a comment. Yeah, I didn't have any, um. I'd just like to see that the, the space utilized, I know the planning board would do their part. For the architectural design and the feel for the building.
That's gonna be my comment. Architectural standards.
Yeah, the standards, they're very.
Always rely on staff or, you know, fire chief, police chief, building, you know, building commissioner and all those folks. Right. I can pretty much think of everything I can.
So basically, Trace, the only, um, comments are that if, if we receive another, um, revised. Plan to review for comment, to please indicate what those changes were. And, um, with, that we're supporting the efforts of the bylaw with. Regards to the architectural design and flavor, for what we were looking for at town. Good. Alright, anybody else have anything for that? Good, we're good? Okay, so. In front of us, we, um, we have to do this every year, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so we have to vote to appoint a representative and an alternate to the joint transportation planning group. Um, it's an annual, um, appointment. Currently, Frank, Frank Limones is our, uh. Pointe representative, and Leah Fabian is our alternate. Uh, believe they meet once a month. Um, are they still doing it remotely, or are they doing it in person?
In five years, I've never had to alternate, so. Frank's pretty good about going to these meetings.
Alright, so do, could I entertain a, your motion for, um.
I'd like to make a motion to rep, to appoint Frank Mooney's as the town's representative to the joint transportation planning group. And Leah Fabian as the alternate representative, for terms to expire May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
A motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion?
That's okay, right? You're okay doing it.
I do stay, you know, and I've actually gone to a couple of the, like, more public meetings, there were, you know, just some meetings, especially about the. Kingman Street Bridge and whatever that, you know, when they expanded, I do join him, but he's got it covered pretty well, yeah.
Okay, um, roll call, vote, please. Uh, Fabian, I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I. Candita, I.
Day, I.
Alright. Okay, so we have a request from the Tuesday Club of Assonet to place a sign. On town property for the annual strawberry festival. Um, in the past, they have been able to place a sign at the Pickens Precinct Street Interse- intersection. Um, it would be there for two days, uh, well, it would be. Um, to advertise the annual strawberry festival, to remove it within two days after the festival, so the festival is on June sixteenth. And they were looking for permission, um, as they have done in previous years, and they'll remove it two days after. So.
I'll make the motion to approve the request from Tuesday Club to place a sign at the intersection of Precinct and Pickens Street to advertise the annual strawberry festival and to remove it within two days after the festival.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Fabian, I.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I. Candita, I.
Day, I.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to a building committee updates. Um, first one, um, senior center addition feasibility study. So I don't even know if we wanna keep calling it feasibility study, but it's right now in like the hands of the staff, I think I mentioned that, but they're working on it.
Yeah, I, um, sent an invite, uh, meeting invite to the facilities manager. The building commissioner and the COA director to have a meeting, I believe, next Monday. Um, for an update on the addition to the COA building for the food pantry.
Okay. Excellent, Tracy, so just, we'll just take out feasibility, um, and we'll just leave it as senior center addition. I think I like those updates. Good. Uh, fire station building committee, uh, we had a scheduled meeting for this Wednesday, but we're looking to move it out. Um, another week, so it would be Wednesday, the thirteenth, I think it is, right, the thirteenth? Um, because we have information that we're still collecting right now, our OPM, um, and our architect. That it's just, would be beneficial to hold it and have that information available to us next week, so we should have a number. Um, and. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, um, my question was, I, I don't remember the last, I watched not the last one, but the one before, I think. Um, where they stated the total of the project, and, um. I was waiting, at what point are we doing like the value engineering? Is value engineering part and parcel of this project? Um, were there any? I don't know, guidelines on size or price that were given to your board as a, as a charge?
Nope, we didn't have any of that, um, as part of the charge.
Okay, so. Usually, and this might just be dating me, there's a value engineer, engineering process that happens at this point, where they shrink down the project slightly. I didn't know if that is what part of the plan is.
Um, I, I guess we'll find out Wednesday.
Okay, alright, my concern, um, is that. Twenty-one million is a very big vote for the people of Lakeville, not that the fire station won't be great and have all the things that we need. But I'm very concerned that if we bring this to the people of Lakeville with this dollar amount, that we'll do all of this work and that it won't get approved. I wanna show the people of Lakeville where we're trying to, you know, get everything. Shrunken down as much as possible to, to fit our needs without any waste of space or waste of dollars. Cause I know this project, in the way that it was presented in that last meeting, was, this is everything that you, you've asked for in order to, to suit the needs. In, in the past, I remember the, the police station, we did that and then we shrunk it from there.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know.
It's a point I can certainly bring up, um, yes, Wednesday, um, because you're right, I mean, even the, the, the committee itself. Is aware that, you know, we'd be asking at this town meeting. Money for, you know, design development, which is a, you know, it's a substantial amount of money. Um, and then not to go anywhere, so it is the intention of the fire station building committee. To hold an open house and get some information out to the public, saying that, you know, this is kind of where we are, this is what we're looking to do, this is. You know, the cost, and, um, if, you know, you're voting on. Supporting the design development money at town meeting, that there. We think that we'd be moving this forward, so just wanna make sure, I mean, there's still a lot of. Little things that we need to find to on this, so.
The feasibility study, the first one, not the first first one, but the first one that was done, uh, done, um, I believe. The estimate was about thirteen million for the fire station.
Yeah, that was also done X number of years ago now, three years ago, I think it was started.
So when we have such a disparity between what the, it was, would, would this board have an appetite to create a non-binding, binding vote for the people of Lakeville? In order to gauge the appetite for supporting this prior to?
What does that mean?
So we would have a ballot vote, it wouldn't be non-binding, meaning, you know, we're not gonna act on what they're saying, it's informational purposes. Um, because I, I, I'd love to be able to support everything that the, the fire department leads, however. If we give everything in, and if we present a twenty-one million dollar project, when they're expecting a thirteen million dollar project. There's gonna be some sticker shock, and I'm, I'm worried that we're gonna go through all this and not have the support that we need, and then we'll be back again, you know, months later. With another proposal, instead of being able to be prepared for whatever result. In the upfront, Leah, you.
Yeah, no, I just, um, I, I know what you're saying, Maureen, but, um, so let's talk about this building. This room, everyone says is undersized, we should have made it bigger, so I don't wanna go into this next build. Cutting back, um, knowing that, but also I've driven around and looked at some fire stations and. You know, gotten numbers on square footage and, you know. And we're, actually, we have to house more, because we have a breaker, because we have to go in the woods, we have a water truck, we have to go in the woods. Some of these other fire stations don't necessarily have, we have two ambulances. So that's another bay for those, and I do think that with, wasn't there the little smaller subcommittee that they did downsize some of the?
They did, there was a needs, um. A needs.
Assessment.
Right, needs assessment, and they went through it and, um, they flushed out, so, um. But it was just based on what the, the mission and the needs were, and they did take some stuff off.
Right, um, and I'm not sure if they downsized the meeting room, again, I don't wanna see that happen. But I think there still needs to be a meeting room, I don't think, you know, you can not put a meeting room there because.
There's two.
Yeah, first of all, we're still short on space.
Right.
Um. And they still need to have some kind of a training room anyways, you know, we, or otherwise, we would be asking the fire department. To leave the fire station to go for training. So that's why I'd like to see that building stay somewhat intact.
So, I mean, just for, um, purposes of, of community outreach, I know the chief is gonna be putting together, um, with, um, our. Um, OPM, a video of. What it is that we have already for schematic design and what the, the reasoning is behind that, um, so that they can, you know, talk about. Why, why this, why do we have these? Um, and then when, you know, it may be one meeting, it may be two, that we have an open house, or we haven't decided.
I, I understand, my, my problem is, you know, the, the build, that's great, but it's the sticker shock, and if it's gonna be supported.
I, I do think that even going back a couple of years, we were talking about at least seventeen or eighteen million dollars, not thirteen. So it's never been less than seventeen that I can remember.
The town hall was thirteen.
The town hall was thirteen.
The fire station was seventeen. Is interest included in that?
Say what?
Is interest included in that?
Not on the loan?
Oh, no, that would be totally a whole other conversation.
That would be a whole.
So, one of the, the items that had been brought to the committee, um, and I know that I've talked to, uh, Mr. Nunes about this. Is that, um, you know, there has to be some kind of a calculator that we can. Put onto our website, so if your house is valued at this amount, you put this in.
Oh, good, that's a good idea.
And, you know, so it will tell you that, you know, on, whether it be a fifteen or twenty year, we'll get the. Amortization, um, chart, um, what that would look like, I mean, I don't know what the rates are, you know, I mean, our bond rating and borrowing, it could be. You know, I don't know what that looks like, so when next week, when we get what the number is. Um. I'm hoping to be able to have this calculator available, so people can go in, it's like when you buy your car, hey.
Right, to know how much it's gonna cost you.
How much do I have to put down, you know, type of thing, because we understand the sticker shock, like, we get that, and.
It's getting normalized in this conversation, but not to the.
Not to the general public. My big concern is that if we're asking people for spending six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for, you know, design development at town meeting. Now. There's still an ask coming, and that's the big ask right there, so it's like, you have to be a smart shopper, knowing that if we're buying this. Cause six hundred and fifty-five dollars is a lot of money to spend and go nowhere.
Right, no, I, I totally agree with that, um, but I still think we need to, I, I think that. I, I mean, this is something that I've been looking at for five years, and. It's not getting any cheaper, and to build a smaller building just. And I, I don't say this lightly, just to try to save money. That was one reason, another reason why, you know, in my, this is my opinion only, so I do think that when this building was built. The select board knew how bad that existing police station was as far as mold, and I think that was another reason why. They didn't try to go for a combined building. Again, this is my opinion. Because they knew they had to get everybody out of that building, so they went for the more sure. Thing, which was a not combined building, because they knew it would be cheaper. I don't wanna make those same mistakes again. I wanna build a fire station that's gonna last for the next forty years.
Understood, Madam Chair, oh, sorry.
The, the, the charge of the committee too was to, to build to the mission, right, and I know I've heard the chief say a number of times, like, he doesn't wanna Taj Mahal. He wants to build to the mission, so I'm putting some trust that the subcommittee has done that. If there's an exercise to say, like, have we hit all the needs assessments? Yes. Was there extra fluff that we really don't need? That's another discussion that could happen, but. I mean, look at real estate in town, I mean, I've only been here since twenty sixteen, it's, you know, go by what they say online, it's literally gained eighty percent increase just in value. And we're seeing the same thing with construction costs go just through the roof, so we're. If we're having the same conversation again in three years, it's not gonna be twenty-one million, it's not gonna be twenty-five million, it's gonna be thirty-five million, and we're gonna go, ah, we should have built it years ago. Um, I mean, the other thing too that comes out is that, you know, going back a couple of feasibility studies, they also said, we're on the cusp of needing a substation in South Lakeville. So that's something else that we might have to think about down the road. Um, but yeah, we've got the breaker, we've got tankers, because we have no hydrants, not no hydrants, but nearly no hydrants, we've got a draft from the ponds, we've got the boat, I mean, we do have needs that. Others don't, I know there's been a lot of concern over like, oh, we're twenty-five, four thousand square feet come from, well, you start adding up all these bays and such, and well, if you've got a second floor, you're pretty much doubling your space. I mean, if it meets the needs.
Right, different, you know, requirements, I mean, you know, I, I don't know if, um, was it you, someone I, I know brought up the, uh, triage room?
Yes.
I mean, I can't tell you how many times I've been at town, and I've now been doing this for total nine years so far, that I've been hanging out at town hall. I can tell you, I have seen people pull in and walk right into the fire department and look for treatment.
It just happened this last week. Like, the, the chief, the deputy came back to, like, get something and found somebody there looking for treatment.
Right, so, I mean, you know, like, we do need a triage room, um, I. I looked at the design yesterday, cause this was. I I looked at the design yesterday, because this was the first time I saw it all blown up at the, at Lakeville Day. And Maureen, to your point, and and I respect your opinion, but I honestly don't know where we would, you know, especially, you know, the way the growth is happening. I mean, I know we're going to get
I understand all of it. My, my fear is that we do it and it doesn't get approved. That's, that's my fear. And then adding on top of that, what do we do with the town hall?
Right.
That's a whole, right, that's a whole other-
Cause that conversation, you're right.
That's a whole other conversation.
Um-
It's huge.
I want to talk to all three of you, I'm so sorry. I think it's a good idea to set out the public opinion survey. I think it's also a good idea to put out the public opinion survey with, um, you know, something about the town hall. It's whether it's, you know, would you reconsider combining or reconsider, you know, something with the town hall?
Well-
To yours.
That would have been possible last year and then the vote was split.
It was split for a very specific reason I'm about to get into.
Good.
To your point, I understand that's your opinion, I totally get it. I totally get the idea that we need to, you know, we need to get a building, so we're just going to do this and, you know, it's cheaper. But is it really cheaper? Because now we're looking at this.
Right.
So, so it wasn't cheaper.
Right, so it wasn't cheaper in the long run and less using the space, more space.
So to yours, about a potential substation in the future. I don't see that, because this building, at its current size and proposed size, there are eight single bedrooms and then a s- like, a studio-sized apartment for a deputy officer. There's only four firefighters on duty at a time, why are there eight bedrooms? So if we're talking about a substation in the future and this building is sized to accompany between seventeen thousand to nineteen thousand people, then I ask again, why aren't we designing this one as almost a mirror, maybe a little bigger than what we have now? So we're saving on the money, we're saving on the room, and then we can afford a substation in the future to avoid saving money now, because it's not going to save money now. So I still have reservations about how big it is. I have reservations about a triage room. Because, yes, we do spend to the mission, but the chief is trying to evolve the mission right now. He's trying to evolve it to parasocial community medicine. Advertising a triage bay, who is going to update their monitors? Who is going, what happens if someone dies in that building? Who is responsible? Because they heard that there's a triage building at the fire station, so instead of calling nine-one-one or going to a hospital, they made their way to the fire station, because there's a triage room. I have serious concerns about this, and I think the people of Lakeville are going to look at it and say, why is this this way when this is the way it is now?
They still need an area to triage people.
Absolutely, I'm not, I'm not discrediting that.
And, and, you know, right, no, I know, but I'm just saying that, you know, right now, if someone comes to town hall, they literally bring them into their kitchen area, so-
Which is not appropriate.
Right, it's not appropriate, eh, plus it's not HIPAA, really, you know. So I I just look at the design though and I really don't see, you know, um, we need to incorporate the things we don't have, a- a- and we certainly don't have decontamination areas and all that stuff that we don't necessarily think about. Now, as far as downsizing living quarters, I'm not an expert on that.
With, I'm just saying that with the way it's designed right now, the possibility of a substation is almost nonexistent. Because this is already going to be big enough to fund an expansion of the town's population by six thousand people. So a substation, that's going to be a really hard sell, when we already have something that is bigger than what we need.
The challenge is, we don't know what's going to come thirty years from now. So it it could turn into runs are longer, because of new development in towns that we can't even plan for now. You know, when we move the station wherever it goes, we're going to move that bubble of insurance costs as well with it, so that as people exit out the eight minutes or whatever it is, right? Some people can see what's going up, something, right? It's, there is no great answer, because nothing's perfect here, but this is what's in front of us right now.
Right, and I just, I think it's a case of, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, but I think it's a case of trying to have cake and eat it too. Because it's asking for a big improvement and then also lingering on the horizon, a potential substation. And that's just a bit much.
Discussion well received. So I will be bringing these back to, uh-
I I appreciate it, I just want, i- if we're we're going forward with this, I want to be as, you know, well communicated ahead of time, um, you know, we we don't want anyone to be, uh, all of a sudden thinking they're voting for thirteen million.
No, and I I do think a lot of it, I mean, I I I talked to a lot of people yesterday, just the short amount of time that I was standing, you know, by the plans, and I think, I don't think folks want to mess around with their emergency services.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
So I think that we're obligated to do the best we can and the best we know how right now. But, you know, I I mean, also, we know too that competition is tough. And if what it takes to get some of these young whippersnappers to work for us is a really nice place to sleep, then I want to give them their own room, so, I mean, you know.
So that's actually the best marketing that the fire station building committee could do. Is to put out the public thing, because when people see it, they're going to say, what? And then they're going to go and they're going to seek the information. So I think that's a great idea, because allowing them, getting them not riled up, but paying attention before the meeting means that the chief is going to have more ears to listen when he explains why we need what he's proposing.
I think you guys are working with the PR people.
We are.
Right, but, but that's, that's one thing. Whereas, you know, kicking the hornet's nest, so to speak, by putting out, you know, this is what to expect at town hall, don't just show up and be surprised. You might get more listeners.
Yeah, well, we can get the message out and what the expectations are, I mean, I'm concerned too.
Is there a timeline on the PR? Because we've got the item on the warrant, that's not far away.
Aren't they going to do something-
The design and-
Small ahead of town meeting?
Oh, gosh, yeah, maybe one or two things before town meeting, that's what we had talked about. So, um, it's about making sure that people are making an educated, you know, like, smart shopper decision.
Are we going to do a presentation at town meeting?
Yes, so that was supposed to-
Open house.
Yep. Well, at town meeting, there'll be, there'll be a presentation at town meeting, right before. So we'll have our OPM do that.
Thank you, everyone, for like, a really robust but respectful conversation.
Yeah, no, I-
Love it.
Nope, it's good stuff. All right, um, Old Colony.
Speaking of capital items that are huge, um, so we should, we are having a meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock. And if all went well, we, so tomorrow morning, the team is meeting to select an architect. And then if they select an architect, they are dragging them down to the school that night to begin the process of introducing them to the the building committee and whatnot. So, um, hopefully at our next meeting, um, we should have some more information on who they've selected and what happens next.
Excellent, Chair Trillo, is it still, like, they're still deciding between the two type of plans? One where they're going to build but keep the existing one?
So one of the first things they have to do is present, I don't have my cheat sheet of acronyms here, but they have to present a a report that essentially says, if we do an addition, here's our plan, if we do a renovation, here's our plan, if we do a full build, here's our plan.
Okay.
And then the building committee is supposed to make a recommendation to MSBA, or MSBIS, get back to them, on-
I know who you meant.
What the, what the recommendation of the committee is.
Okay.
And then they'll go from there, whether they have a different opinion or, hey, did you, I see you want to do this, did you think about these things? Go back and look at that and come back to us again. So, it's going to, starting to get real.
We have the tour on the sixteenth, right?
I believe so.
Okay.
Next Thursday?
Oh my god, timeless flight.
No. Yes, Wednesday, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, right, Thursday. I can't count, pass, eight o'clock.
Twenty-one and a half.
Thank you, Maureen. Um, and I think we know where we are with the TA search.
Yep.
Um, any new business? Okay, old business, um, the workshop, so it looks like everybody is available for Monday, uh, May thirteenth at five-thirty, so we'll keep it to about two hours. It looks like we may have one more vote on the TA stuff, um, for that Monday, so we'll work that into the schedule. But, um, so bring your, um, I'll be working with with Lacey on, you know, kind of the, how it's going to fold out, so we can get all of your information that you have in in mind, um, to-
Where will that meeting be?
Here.
Okay.
It should be available, because Mondays are night, so.
I think she checked.
Okay.
I think that was the thing to, um, check to see when it was open, so that we had some dates available to put back to you guys.
So, Madam Chair, while we're talking about it, um, so I can get it posted, what do you want the agenda to say?
Um, I will call you in the morning.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect.
Because right now, I don't, my words probably wouldn't, uh, remember everything.
The one we did last year, Madam Chair, we ran that description through council before posting it, if it's of any help. I don't remember what it said at this point, but-
All right, maybe we can pull that out, Tracy. Okay, um-
I had one thing, if I may, for old business. Tracy invited me, which I was thankful for, to come see a demonstration of one of the online Agenda Packet Minutes software things that she was evaluating, I was really impressed. And was honestly blown away with how much more transparency and such we could have with something like that in place. I know it's something that we've kicked around for a while now, I just don't know how to proceed or whatnot. They also gave her some, like, ballpark figures, this is only one vendor, of course. Um, but it was nowhere near as much as I thought it would be, and it was population-based, not like, how many-
Well, then it's eleven thousand seven hundred. May I ask what what the price was for implementation?
I was just looking, I don't have my notes here, but I want to say they said anywhere from like eighteen hundred to three thousand startup costs and then, is it five to ten thousand a year, depending on what module you picked?
Is there a community cabinet grant that would cover that?
I don't know. Look into it.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes, I do have another, um, meet and greet coming up with Granicus. Brian, if you would like an invite, I would be happy to send one to you.
Sure.
So you can see what they have to offer. And the other one that Ari and I had previewed was Civic Plus. And, uh, neither one of us was overly impressed with that one. So, um, but the one that we did see, um, this last one, it was, it was really neat, uh, it's going to be a little time-consuming and a little more work. But the end product is going to be far superior for the public than what we have now. I mean, they'll actually be able to click on an item and it will automatically take them to the point in the video where that item is discussed. So if someone's looking for one particular discussion, they just click on the item and the video pops up right next to it. They just hit play and it gives them the discussion, which I was extremely impressed with. And they are comparable, they do work with Civic Plus in many communities, so, um, but, um, yeah, I can send you the invite to Granicus.
It's like living in the future.
If no one else wants to go, I'd like to go.
I can send you the invite too.
I need to, uh- So, you know, maybe this is something that, you know, after town meeting, you know, this summer, maybe this is something that we, you know, kind of talk about so we can have a head wrapped around what, because I know we've we've discussed, we want to move in a a new direction. What direction it is, we don't know, but we can make a decision.
Yeah, so to give you some other examples, um, during the demonstration, in addition to the video thing, there was kind of like, okay, the the parking lot of agenda items, and you might not know what meeting it's going to be on, but they can start loading in all the materials to go with those, then as the chair just goes, I want to do this one, this one, this one, this one, build the agenda. Does the meeting, we can all see it internally, and then once you've posted it, then it's publicly available to see. And then once it's done, same thing with the minutes, right? So you can load the minutes in, type those out, they're all, you know, for us to see, then once we approve them, then they're publicly available. And you get like anybody, I shouldn't say anybody, you could have many different people doing the minutes, different, you know, um, boards and commissions, um, what was the other thing then, really? Oh, it ties in with our authentication, we already have with IT, so you can give people accounts and if they leave, they're automatically done. They had apps for iPad, not iPhone though, but they had a web interface.
It was iPhone, mainly geared to an iPhone, but you could do Android.
It was just nice to see things we could be doing that we're not, I guess.
It was great to have Brian along, because they were speaking IT and I was just sitting there going, so glad you could-
I know, end user, end user ability, yep, I hear you. Well, that's good, thank you, Brian.
Welcome.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Getting back to item A, Aunt Lacey did book the room on May thirteenth, so the meeting will be here.
Thank you.
Sweet. And Tracy, nudge me if you don't hear from me by nine-thirty tomorrow.
I will try to remember.
All right.
That's true, I was late from now.
All right, so, um, I mean, because we can really post on Wednesday too, it's not a-
Yeah, we, yeah, we have a time, yes.
And then it'll probably hit me tomorrow afternoon that I get to follow you. Okay, so, um, we had discussed the publishing the entire warrant, um, the special and the annual in the Nemasket, um, week. So I guess Middleborough's was about thirty-three thousand one hundred ninety-six for the annual and six hundred and sixty-three for a four article special warrant. So our annual could run us between nine and a thousand, I mean, we don't really know, um, because we'd have to get hard numbers. But roughly, and then the special could be six to seven hundred, but it's only one article, so it might even be less than that. Um, so was there any appetite for the?
I don't want to spend the money.
Hmm?
I don't want to spend the money, but that's me.
Tracy, could you reiterate what you said earlier, please?
On?
The Nemasket.
Um, well, um, at some point in time, it was, ye- oh, years ago, probably about ten years ago, the select board voted to save money, to just put a simple ad in that costs seventy-five dollars that just says that, um, the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants are available online at the town website or available at the town clerk's office. It was a cost savings measure. Um, so, um, we haven't, we haven't been doing it for years. I can't remember the last time we did it.
Not the announcement that there is a warrant, just the actual warrant, the entire warrant, right?
So, um, in the, in the part of the warrant, it says that it's in the Nemasket week. So part of the problem with that wording is, if you look at the wording, it says it's an attested copy. So an attested copy means that the constable has gone out, signed it and served it and posted it. I wouldn't be able to place the ad until the attested copy was actually posted, um, out and published, because just posting the ad, it's not attested. So that's one of the, that's one of the things. Um, the second part is that we have just never put that language in, you know, we've had times where due to newspaper error, um, the ad didn't get in. So if we post the warrant ad and it says that it's in the Nemasket week and it doesn't get in the Nemasket week, if we don't have that phrasing in there, we could switch to the standard times and, or, you know, that's it. You know, we're in a time crunch, we can switch to the standard times and put it in there. So that's, that's part of the problem with spelling out that Nemasket week, if there is an error and it doesn't get out there properly at the time it's supposed to, then now we have a problem, so.
Tracy, is this a legal opinion?
No, it's just, if it doesn't, if it says in the warrant that you sign that it's in the Nemasket week and it does say at the top, an attested copy is posted at. So, um, a copy that doesn't have your signatures on it is not an attested copy.
Right.
A copy that doesn't have a constable's signature on it is not an attested copy. And then, of course, if we say it's in the Nemasket week and it doesn't go in the Nemasket week for some crazy reason, the internet goes out, they can't publish, something like that, and then we switch it to the standard times, now we have a problem, because we said it was in the Nemasket week, but it wasn't.
Well, that's the thing, because we have to be very clear with where where it's posted. So, um, as Maureen, you know, had asked, I would want Legal to weigh in on that clearly. And I would think, ju- just because we didn't make the Nemasket and we decided to post in the standard times, that is not, um, transparent, because we didn't announce it. So what are we going to have, a little note that says-
Don't we, don't we have our posted location? Isn't that now the Nemasket?
Right, so, right, so there's, would be no reason to put it in the standard times unless this board decided and voted that it was going into the standard times.
Does it affect that wording if it's still in the Nemasket online as opposed to in print?
It would have to be an attested copy. So it would have to be signed by all the board members and signed by the constable.
Right.
Does Middleborough, did Middleborough have an attested copy?
It was, um, the name was there, but I don't think the signatures were-
I didn't see any signatures either.
I don't think it has to be attested, it can just be put in the Nemasket.
Yeah, I don't think the idea is to make it harder for people to get the information. I think it's-
Well, we need to change the language on our warrant, because our warrant says it's an attested copy, so-
It still begs the question, do we want to spend that much money?
That's the issue, that's the-
You know, to to do that.
If you vote yes, we'll figure a way to do it.
Right, but it says, you know, in the posting, and I and I understand that, you know, it is going to get put up at the- Right, but it says, you know, in the posting, and I, and I understand that, you know, it is going to get put up at the, you know, there's not an office at the Nemasket Week, is what I'm saying. So.
Aren't there above checking?
When did this go into the, I mean, we have a little, we say that the warrant can be found. So there's a posting that goes into the Nemasket Week that says that the warrant can be found at these locations.
What if we did that and put a QR code, so they could scan it with their phone and be brought to it on the website?
It's too advanced. We don't have that. We've never used a QR code.
You just say. So.
So I, I think you're talking, honestly, I know what you're saying. I mean, I, you know, my, everything is QR code now, and I'm constantly scanning. But I think the people you're trying to reach are the people that would be the ones that would read the warrant if it was actually.
In the paper.
In the paper, the entire thing. Everybody else is going to be like, oh, okay, let me just go to their website, and they'll read it. But are we trying, that's our question, are we trying to capture that audience that's not going to go to the website to read it, no matter how we redirect them to get there? And I don't know, is someone going to read the actual warrant just because it's there? And maybe show up at town? They may read it, but is it still going to get them to show up to town meeting? I, I don't, I don't, is it worth spending a thousand dollars?
I will get, render my opinion for what it's worth. I think anything that brings education to people in a format where they're going to be seeing it and they're using it is a valuable use of our resources, but I do understand, we are constrained with resources. But, I mean, when Middleborough does it, and they, they obviously have more resources than we do and all that stuff. I mean, it, it becomes remarkable. It becomes something that you can discuss with people and possibly want to attend for, because there is something that, to be said for, before you know something is in effect or, or have, it has value to you. You need to know it, it exists.
And you know what? Last year, Maureen, I would have agreed with you one hundred percent. This year, I had to cut a million dollars out of my budget, thanks to Bob. No. Blaming you, Bob. And, and I also, the only reason why I hesitate this year is because I don't want to start a practice that was stopped for financial reasons by all our predecessors.
Yeah, but we're financially stable.
But, you know, we may need an override, so, you know, I don't want to start, you know, do it this year and then for the fall say, oh, so we have to, and the fall warrant usually, although I can't say that either, in the last couple of years, we've had a couple of really long fall meetings. So, and you know what? It may just come down to, you know, a democratic vote here. What do we want to do and?
Right.
So we'll put it to a vote. I mean, we don't, we don't know what a hard number is.
Talk about it for forty-five minutes.
We don't have a hard number.
I'll make a motion to publish the entire warrant of all special and annual town meetings in the Nemasket Week.
I'll second.
Print and E version.
I'll second. Okay, any discussion?
We have to make sure it's an attested version, according to the language.
Well, they're going to check on that. They're going to check on that.
Well, it says it's in the language of the warrant, that it is.
I will check with town, general council this tomorrow, town council.
Hold on.
He'll ask the lawyers tomorrow if that's at all.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
But hold on.
What month are we in? We're in May, right? We were this morning.
Yeah.
I think, I, I don't think.
It may not be after this meeting.
It says here that it will be an attested copy. So Legal can have their opinion, but it says here.
Okay, we can change that.
Okay.
We can change it.
So that's, I think, the question.
The reason why I put it in is because I saw that of the locations. Right around the time I was preparing the warrant, a member candido brought up a vote in Nemasket Week. So I put it in, so we wouldn't forget about it.
Perfect.
It's there. It brought attention to the issue and.
Okay.
I will check tomorrow, if the vote is to post in the Nemasket Week.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to add a cap, money-wise.
Well, you can't do a cap, because the, it goes by inch.
I think it's going to be more than a thousand dollars, but that's just. Okay, so when, you know, it comes back and it's, you know, two thousand dollars.
It'll be too late, because they're going to proofread and.
Right.
I deal, with the Middleborough, they proofread and.
They will send me a proof.
They'll send you a proof?
They will send me a price for me to approve.
Yeah.
And it will have a price. So. Will we get the price?
Okay. All right.
All right, wait, I'll amend my motion then. I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion.
No, you can't.
Why? It's, I rescind my motion.
Okay, you rescind it.
I'm making a new motion. I'll authorize the town administrator to get a proof of the special and annual town meeting warrant so the Nemasket Week, and if he does deem it fiscally responsible to move forward with publishing it.
So I can send them, I can send the quote.
It's within his dollar amount to approve.
Get off that, Tracy.
Second. Okay. Third. For the discussion?
But I'll look it up.
Hearing none? Roll call, please. Baby and I.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Candido, aye.
They aye.
Okay, so our next meeting is the thirteenth. But our next, that's goal setting.
And it's six.
The regular next meeting is May twentieth at five-thirty.
Goal setting at the COA?
Here.
Here, got it. Sorry for the misinformation.
Okay, we have some correspondence in your packet. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion to return at eight forty-six.
Second.
Roll call, Baby and I.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Candido, aye.
They aye.